Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of February 19th. Heads up drivers, a daily lane closure of Southeast 3rd Street has begun. It'll be closed approximately from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM between Southeast Douglas and Southeast Green Streets for utility work for one month. One-way traffic will be maintained. All work is weather permitting. Find more information at citymls.net. Looking for a career change? The city is hiring. The city offers rewarding career opportunities, a positive environment, and fantastic benefits. View these opportunities at lspopel.net. The police department has partnered with behavioral health providers to provide a path to recovery for people seeking treatment for substance use disorders. It's called Safe Passage. Participation in the program is voluntary and individuals would be connected with treatment and recovery resources. Learn more at citymls.net. And stay connected with the city by following us on our social media platforms. Be the first to know about city updates and related news. Find us on Facebook, X, Instagram, and YouTube. And a reminder, city facilities are closed today for President's Day. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We're gonna walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs, or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's gonna go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There's standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the signed letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you wanna call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're gonna go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T's back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis, they do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene. Licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes, they don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them on, say, 982, then route.
Officers in route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kinda jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison, I'm a mental health professional, I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came, this made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. Say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We wanna help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you. Well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them, and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Councilmember Hodges.
Thank you. I love where you guys are coming from, you're local, and you're all kinda coming together. But where I'm struggling with from the last time that we talked about this, I think it was maybe October. I actually grew up in my district. We moved here my sophomore year in high school. My parents still live in the same house, and I just went through high school here and then have stayed at Lee Summit ever since. The neighborhood that my parents live in is Canterbury. My favorite thing, and I still do to this day, is I love to go running. They have the best sidewalks. I feel like you can go for days. So now I still get to do that, since I live not too far from them. I get to use those same routes that I took during high school, and it's just fun. We're a big soccer family. I love sports, I love to watch sports, and it's even more fun to watch sports when my kids are in it. I coached my little daughter Josie's team, I have since kindergarten. We do the basketball, we do softball, we're gonna do volleyball. It's just so much fun.
Hi, Faith Hodges.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Something that I would like to accomplish while on city council is to get more family activities here. You know, I don't wanna have to be driving my family to, say, the Kansas side or any other city but my own. And I wanna be able to invest in our city and make family memories in our city.
Open the public hearing on the matter of K1 speed, diventures.
Crack shack.
Blue jeans golf.
I just wanna say thank you for bringing this to Lee Summit. I grew up at this, my parents called me, it was there, so I'm excited to have to take my kids there.
Bill number 23-0, pre-construction services for the downtown Market Plaza project.
I am just as excited as everybody else about the downtown marketplace. I'm extremely excited about the community that it's gonna bring, bringing more family things to do to the city and right in the heart of it.
When you presented the numbers, the first time you came to us, it was 25.5% and then a lot of...
You know, people were like, oh, you know, being on council, it's not a lot of work, not a lot of... I think it was a bit of a surprise when there's so much info that you realize you just don't know. Even something as simple as sidewalks. It's like you don't realize how much goes into something like that. After a couple months, I'm like, okay, I'm finally catching the groove of how things work, learning new things, but also feel like I've got some things under my belt as well. It's been a great experience so far.
Welcome everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing tonight to heal the brokenhearted and comfort those that were affected by the tragedy nearly two weeks ago. Help the Lopez and Galvahn families and bring them peace as they continue to mourn and are heavy laden with grief. Bless all the first responders that were answering the call for aid and assistance, especially our own Lee Summit firefighters and Lee Summit police officers. Bless our community as we heal and pray for the neighborhood spirit and give us strength, peace, and trust. And may we always be thoughtful of the duty that we have to our citizens and our city. Lord, have mercy and hear our prayer. Amen.
Again, welcome everyone. Sorry we're off to a late start. We, first, I'm going to call to order the City of Lee Summit regular session number 65. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez.
Mayor Baird.
Here. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, a second by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Standing on, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Standing on, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Also adopted unanimously, thank you. Next is council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. The Spring Open House is going to be in downtown Lee Summit this weekend, March 1st and 2nd. So I hope everybody comes out to support local.
Thank you. Did she steal your thunder?
Yeah, no, it's fine. I didn't know if you were going to mention it or not, and I didn't see your name on there, so I pushed it. But yeah, Spring Open House, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Usually, we talk about items more of business at the end of the meeting, but I think it's kind of council roundtable type thing. Councilmembers and I went to Jeff City last week. Was it last week? And we went to see our senators and representatives, had excellent meetings, trying to get their support. We call it making friends, but also asking, you know, advocating for certain issues. So we talked to them about things like the landfill and the widening of 470 Highway and the interchange at 291, 470 and Colburn, and what a congestion mess that is and how we're going to need help. And we were welcomed with very warm arms and friendliness from each of our representatives and our senator. They're all fighting for us on the landfill legislation. And we're really in a special spot right now with our legislatures, at the state level, with regard to the relationship they have with the city and the support they have for Lee Summit. So I appreciate the councilmembers. They all, most of us went, so it was pretty impressive. I asked how often they see that many councilmembers come into an office. I mean, we could barely fit in a couple of those offices, all of us, and they were very complimentary, so thank you all. Next, we have proclamations. Can I have the Meals for, or excuse me, the March for Meals Month is what we're doing. So can I have the Meals on Wheels group come forward?
Familiar faces. I see you every year. You're all passionate about this, about serving our community. So I'm going to start off with the proclamation, and then we'll go from there. Whereas this year, Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs both congregate and home-delivered in Lee Summit, Missouri, have served our community
Welcome everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing tonight to heal the brokenhearted and comfort those that were affected by the tragedy nearly two weeks ago. Help the Lopez and Galvahn families and bring them peace as they continue to mourn and are heavy laden with grief. Bless all the first responders that were answering the call for aid and assistance, especially our own Lee Summit firefighters and Lee Summit police officers. Bless our community as we heal and pray for the neighborhood spirit and give us strength, peace, and trust. And may we always be thoughtful of the duty that we have to our citizens and our city. Lord have mercy and hear our prayer. Amen.
Again, welcome everyone. Sorry, we're off to a late start. We, first, I'm going to call to order the City of Lee Summit regular session number sixty-five. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Lovell.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMaro, a second by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Standing on, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion. Standing on, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Also adopted unanimously, thank you. Next is council roundtable. These are items of general interest, things going on in the community. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. The Spring Open House is going to be in downtown Lee Summit this weekend, March first and second, so I hope everybody comes out to support local.
Thank you. Did she steal your thunder?
Yeah, no, it's fine. I didn't know if you were going to mention it or not, and I didn't see your name on there, so I pushed it, but yeah, Spring Open House, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Usually, we talk about items more of business at the end of the meeting, but I think it's kind of council roundtable type thing. Councilmembers and I went to Jeff City last week, was it last week? And we went to see our senators and representatives, had excellent meetings, trying to get their support. We call it making friends, but also asking, you know, advocating for certain issues. So we talked to them about things like the landfill and the widening of four seventy highway and the interchange at two ninety-one, four seventy and Colburn, and what a congestion mess that is and how we're going to need help. And we were welcomed with very warm arms and friendliness from each of our representatives and our senator. They're all fighting for us on the landfill legislation. And we're really in a special spot right now with our legislatures, the state, at the state level with regard to the relationship they have with the city and the support they have for Lee Summit. So I appreciate the council members. They all, most of us went, so it was pretty impressive. I asked how often they see that many council members come into an office. I mean, we could barely fit in a couple of those offices, all of us, and they were very complimentary, so thank you all. Next, we have proclamations. Can I have the Meals for, or excuse me, the March for Meals Month is what we're doing. So can I have the Meals on Wheels group come forward? Familiar faces. I see you every year. You're all, you're all passionate about this, about serving our community. So I'm going to start off with a proclamation and then we'll go from there. Whereas this year, Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered in Lee Summit, Missouri, have served our community admirably for more than fifty years. Whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels Program in Lee Summit provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout our community that help them maintain their health and independence, and provides powerful opportunity for social connection for hundreds of seniors to combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. By virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Lee Summit, I do hereby proclaim the month of March twenty twenty-four as March for Meals Month. Can I get a hand? Thank you. Susie, who have you brought for us today?
I'm Susie Newsom, board member for Meals on Wheels of Lee Summit.
I'm Jenny Edwards, the operations director.
Corey Henry, board member.
Kathy Yates, I'm board member and secretary.
Terry Kenslow, board member.
Michael Gann, board member.
Tell us a little bit.
We want to sincerely thank this whole community for all the support, and we are just like jumping up and down because we're so excited that this is our fiftieth year of serving Lee Summit. Two local ladies started this organization with fifteen clients in nineteen seventy-four. And Lee Summit was sixteen thousand, about around sixteen thousand population back then. And a lot has changed. Jenny manages at least a hundred and fifty volunteers every week to get the meals out the door and to our clients, and what, probably about a hundred and forty clients?
About, yeah.
A hundred and forty clients right now. First responders have come out and helped us volunteering. We're going to put the mayor to work here in a couple, three weeks to help deliver meals as well. But we, again, we sincerely thank you for the partnerships, the support, and the love that's gone into this organization, obviously, for fifty years to keep us here and keep us doing what we're doing.
So it's not, it's not work. It's, I go and there's like a parade of vehicles, and there's hustling and bustling, and there's meals that have been prepared like crazy that day, so they're fresh. And then they do let me go for a couple of ride-alongs and get to see the happiness and the appreciation of the seniors and the people with disability that you're serving. And it's, it's, it's not work, but I'm glad that you guys put the work behind the scenes. But for the volunteers that get to drive and do it, I appreciate them greatly, but I can't think of anything more rewarding. So if you want to get involved, they're always looking for volunteers. And you can do it once a week, you can do it, whatever's convenient, whatever fits your schedule. So thank you for all you're doing.
We actually have a brand new brochure.
Yeah. Yeah, give them to Mark Dunning. Yeah, or give them to Crystal.
Being so much to the clients, and Jenny has worked so hard at coordinating with the school district, with different groups of schoolchildren that, from elementary to high school, that have put together and created placemats, greeting cards for holidays and all, and it brings tears to.
So what's kind of neat is a lot of our clients are not near their families. They may not see anyone during the day but our driver. And so we've gone to houses where they've gotten a placemat from a, you know, an elementary age student, and it's still there a year later. Or it's on their fridge because they don't get grandkids artwork, and this is their, the artwork they get to show off. So it's, it's very touching.
And the attachment, the driver's.
Yes, yeah. And we've had drivers who notice, they'll get to a client's house and the client's not acting quite right. And so then we alert family, and this has actually happened. It turned out that person had had a stroke. And so we were able to alert the family to get them to the hospital and get them the care they needed. So we're really glad to be a part of our clients' lives. And, you know, all the council members are from throughout Lee Summit, and we have clients throughout Lee Summit. We have clients in Lotawanna, in Lakewood, in Rain Tree, in Winterset, I mean, downtown, everywhere, every neighborhood. We are all over.
Well, thank you again, and keep up the great work, and looking forward to seeing you soon. So would you mind taking a photo? Okay, that is definitely one of our feel-good groups that we're very proud to have in Lee Summit. We're going to move on to business, though. We're going to start talking about, we've got some public hearings to get through tonight. So I'm going to start off by closing the regular session and opening the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5A. This is a preliminary development plan for outlaw Harley-Davidson thirty-one hundred Northeast Carnegie Drive Engineering Solutions LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk? Before we begin, Councilmember Felker.
Mayor, due to a conflict of interest, I am going to recuse myself from participation in this matter.
All right, thank you. Okay, it looks like Mr. Slish just in front of us.
Ready.
All right.
Matt Slish, Engineering Solutions, fifty Southeast Thirtieth Street, Lee Summit, Missouri. I believe online is Rick Worth. He unfortunately had a trip, and I guess I say unfortunately, he's in a nice sunny place, so he's in a much better spot. And then Mike Atchison is with me as well. We can answer any questions you may have today. We're here excited to bring, or an opportunity to bring Harley-Davidson into town. Rick has two other locations up north and then also in Blue Springs. A long history of working in the Harley-Davidson dealership and hopes to provide a unique and very innovative facility here. Located on the south end of the Chapel Ridge Business Park, so Struther Road is on the south side, two ninety-one is on the east, and Ralph Pal on the west. So it essentially is, I've been in front of you over the last couple of years, this is kind of that continuation down to the southerly part of the site. This is one of the last pieces that's available. So as you start to look on the site, a great mix to the north and east of offices, retail, doctors' offices, law offices, a whole bunch of things. To the west is the apartment project we approved last year. It's started construction. And then to the west is the Struther Luxury Garage that hopefully starts kicking off this spring. To the south is that development of like the K-one Frontier Justice, the C store. I think there's a dentist down there. To the southwest starts to be some more of the industrial type uses out in that area. The site is currently zoned CP2, and when we brought it through the original planning commission meeting, we did not have a special use application attached to it. We had gone through a staff and it was determined we weren't needing it. But as we kind of talked through with planning commission, Rick likes to bring out on nice sunny days, roll the Harleys outside, set it outside on the sidewalk right in front of the facility. Every night they go back in. But because in the code, there's a very specific clause that says no outdoor display, we took a S U P application back through the planning commission last Thursday, got a unanimous recommendation of approval. Just again, specifically because we're rolling Harleys in and out, but nothing's left outside, nothing's stored outside, nothing's shown outside. It's just during the days of operation they're there. But otherwise, it's zoned CP2, so as I kind of highlighted in the CP2, a full range of retail and office development serving the general needs of the community. This is kind of just another piece in the Chapel Ridge development. As you kind of look through, and I'll show you a slide in a little bit, of all the different various uses that have accumulated in there over the last twenty, twenty-five years that have made that development a success. The cop plan also shows the area as a commercial use kind of along that entire corridor. I'll take you back to kind of the original nineteen ninety-eight development plan of this mixed-use development. So when the golf course was going away and the development idea came along and Mike brought it forward, everything we're going to show you, it's broken into three pieces because it's so large in that original piece. Originally, in the orange was kind of an office retail use. Originally, in the middle, kind of on the westerly side, was one residential area, kind of with the commercial stuff flanked on the right side or the east, and then the east side of that is two ninety-one. If we go down to the south end, then it's commercial that kind of closes out that loop. And so I highlighted a couple of things from that piece, which is kind of the original idea of the apartment breakdown and the office breakdown. The apartment breakdown originally had about four hundred units of apartments out there. That's been exceeded by some number. I don't think we have exact numbers, but there's existing apartments, there's some townhomes that went in there, so the residential component grew a little bit. The commercial side obviously reduced a little bit, but generally developed in a nice fashion. And then we do have some conversation I put in here just on the declaration, the covenants that were established with the development. And in there, there was a development of a declarant or an architectural review committee that identifies the building types, the character, the colors, and also has the opportunity to declare the choice of businesses that are going there. So it's been very specifically selected throughout this entire process of how this business park would be developed. This, then, is the Chapel Ridge Business Park. So north is to the right side of the page where, out on Woodschapel, a high number of heavy retail type uses, grocery stores down there, Sonics down there, strip centers down there, the retail offices. And then as you kind of come down on the west side, you can see the growth of the residential area that continued. Along the corridor is a large use of mixes of professional and service-based breakouts. And so I tried to identify kind of a different grouping so you could start to see. There is a lot of medical offices, law offices, therapy offices. There's also then things that are in there like the Goddard School that we got approved a few years ago. There's the real estate, there's lending, there's other pieces. There's eye doctors down there. There would be office, obviously, but then also be sales of all the lenses and the glasses it'll be. And so then that gets us down to Struther Road, where you have the C store that's been developed on the south side. It starts to develop again another commercial corridor that's going to be heavy on the intent of user-based development. So the red site is ours where we're hoping to put Harley-Davidson. To the west is the Struther Road Luxury Garage side of it. So if you remember that project, that's a mixed use of allowing opportunities for small businesses to come in and those type of pieces. So that Struther corridor, again, we believe is going to be, as the north side was, a heavy driven by use and customers. So here are some pictures of the site. So at the top left, obviously, is coming off of the ramp, and you'll start to see the site. The top right then is the Vanderbilt site, so we're bound to the south side of it. Looking from Struther then kind of up onto the site, you can kind of see it's a generally flat parcel site. Basically, it's been vacant for the last twenty-five years and prime and ready for development of the site. So what we're hoping to build, thirty-four thousand square foot building, sales and service. On-site parking has ninety-one parking spaces and a training area. We'll talk more about the training area in the future, but basically it's to give young novice riders an opportunity to come on the weekends for about six to eight weeks and ride and learn how to better manage their motorcycle that they're buying. Overall, it's just shy of a four-erker site, and as we talked about, Rick has a couple other sites that he currently operates. His family, again, as I said, has been in this for a number of years. Overall, annual estimated revenue on that site is about fifteen million dollars, and the construction budget, we believe, is going to be around ten million dollars to build this facility. So we went to some great cares. We kind of worked through this site and tried to develop this project of how we would do it. To the north is all of our existing development. To the south then is Struther Road, east is two ninety-one. We tried to bring the building as far south as we possibly could, idea being less, least amount of impact to anybody around us from that side. The training center, we set up on the north corner, again, because that training center is only going to be used on Saturdays and Sundays. It won't be used during the week. Essentially, it'll sit vacant during that time, anything other than the weekends. And then they do like, and Rick did this up north in Tiffany Springs, have an event space. Event space is loosely used because it's very driven, obviously, by weather. They're going to have a few events a year, and typically it is something that happens on a Saturday or Sunday. It happens for a few hours. It's an opportunity for him to bring people to the site, get Harley guys together, show off the new bikes, show off the apparel, and it's really more of a sales promotion kind of thing, less of, you know, a big, large event. It's very limited to the number of people that would be there on that side of it, but it does, it does happen, so we wanted to make sure we talked about that. As we start to look through the facility, so this would be the southerly elevation, you'll start to see the architectural metal panels, the fiber cement board. One of the modification requests we're going to make is the one that we've seen over and over, as opposed to building a parapet wall around our thirty-four thousand square foot building, we're asking that we can use selective mechanical screening around the equipment that is up on the roof. As we look then, what our view is from the south, looking to the Struther Road, is to the southwest is more of an industrial type side of it. And MODOT facility is down there, and then directly to the south is the C store. What eventually they will look at is this very nice two-story glass entry that will be the main entry into the Harley-Davidson facility. Again, then, looking from kind of the Struther roadside is, of course, putting the shield up on the iconic brand as close to two ninety as one as we can. Something that is, we think will look really cool. As you look then of the east elevation, similar materials, similar style. West elevation, again, you're starting to see what it'll be. All of the service bay doors have been integrated into glass-type windows, putting the shields on it, trying to dress it up and make it more architecturally appealing. And as you look again, this is the north view. Again, what we tried to do on the north side is limit the amount of use, exposure, and activity that'll be happening on the north side as we get closer to our residents or our neighbors to the north. So again, then, this is our north view as we look up into the business park, a pretty typical prairie-style facility. There's one brick facility then to the east, and then this is that apartment project. And then this is what we believe they'll be looking at. So this would be Vanderbilt Drive that would be the northerly side of our site. There's additional landscaping that we'll talk about in a little bit that was asked for that'll be on that side of it. There is a right-in, right-out that will access the site, about midway into our site. And as you drive up to the project, this is more similar to what you'll be looking at from that right-in, right-out. So from Ralph Pal, kind of on the south side of our site, you'll be looking at that. At the north side of our site, you'll be looking at much more landscaping and breakup and buffering. So again, we did hold a community meeting. We had a number of the neighbors that were directly the businesses surrounding us. Some of the comments that basically came up were the conversations of traffic, the event usage. There are some concerns over our use versus their use, being sales, service versus the law offices that are around us or the medical offices that are around us. So as we start to go into it, we asked, what could we do? In a CP2 zoning district where it allowed use by right, with the exception of our outdoor display that we got this special use permit working its way through. So we asked, what could we do? It's to be good neighbors. So one thing that came up from one of the neighboring properties was add some buffering, add some additional landscaping. And as we've gone down this path and continued to work with them, we said, okay, well, what if a berm came in? So we've now got to the point where we've got a thirty-inch berm kind of on the north and west side. Additional landscaping where we're willing to make it and push it up to a screening-type buffering, as opposed to just parking lot buffering, what might be required. So essentially, what it's going to do is take the landscaping up to about double of what would normally be required in that area. And in addition to the berm that is not required, to try to do it. I believe they're here this evening. They can speak on their own behalf, but I believe we're reaching conclusion that they understand they may not be happy completely with a sales and service center near them, but they do appreciate and I think believe that this is a good step in the right direction. One conversation then was about the traffic load and the demand that this site would create. And what's actually interesting about it is this site actually generates about half the traffic that an office or medical office would use. Because of the idea of a sales and service facility, it's very specific to going to that site. You don't have as many people that might be coming into a every fifteen-minute or every thirty-minute appointment like you met at a medical office. So actually, as we ran the numbers, the PM or AM peak actually ended up being about sixty percent of what it would be if this site developed in a medical office facility, so it actually decreases the traffic. We then started looking on the noise and the conversation of what would our sales and service center do in this area? And so we went through and we found some noise generating information that's out there that shows that the highway itself generates between fifty and seventy decibels on an average twenty-four-hour average period. So you'll have some peak times, obviously, during the rush hours. You'll have some lower times during the nighttime. But generally, the ambient level based on just the two ninety-one highway traffic is between fifty and seventy decibels. Then on the other side of us is the airport. So again, starting to look at the same traffic data or the information data available by the government is that the airport itself is going to generate between forty-five and fifty decibels of just ambient noise level. of just ambient noise level. So again, trying to identify that out there is not a quiet facility. This is a heavily-traveled, heavily-busy area. So then we started looking at, one of the concerns of the neighbors was that training facility. And again, the training facility is only going to be used Saturdays and Sundays. They, everyone to the north, typically is not there during those times. So I think we've alleviated this comment, but just so we're on the same page of hearing it, is that by the EPA regulations, a Harley-Davidson cannot generate more than 80 decibels. If a Harley-Davidson was driving around on the training facility, the closest building to us is 99 feet away, the calculated decibel level would be 35 decibels. If we then kick it back to the outside of the service center, the north side of our building, which is 288 feet away, the decibel reading at that quarter would be about 30 decibels. So again, remembering the ambient noise of the road is between 50 and 70, the airport's 45 to 50, the site is not generating any additional noise or insignificant amounts. So then we started looking at what is code and requirements from the city. And so the city's defined allowable is 65 decibels at the property at all times. And so even though this dealership has a Harley-Davidson that I think in some perspectives of minds has allowed noise and outlays a lot of effort, the facility will not generate more than is allowed by the code. So then we went through and just provided a couple EPA sections that shows and illustrates that any newly-generated car or motorcycle has to be less than 80 decibels, just again to identify that Harley-Davidson of old with the noise and the sound is not the Harley-Davidson of new that is out there. So we do have a couple modifications that we've requested. One is the parking lot setback. So on the south side, as we were running through the development plan process, we had this parking lot terminating. The fire chief looked at it and said it would be great if we could figure out a way to get some type of a turnaround down in this area for emergency vehicles. So that is what this little tear drop is generated for. What it did is create a space where we are less than allowable on the setback, but there is additional right-of-way between Struthers Road and our property. So from the appearance sake, we don't believe that modification will create any issues. Parking lot design side, we're asking that the curb standard, which is required around all parking lot areas, be reduced or removed in these two sections so we don't have the lip of the curb. That is the training center of brand-new Harley-Davidson riders. Our hope is to not put a trip hazard anywhere near their training facility. So we're going to put a ribbon curb, they'll be landscaping around the outside of it, but they won't have a abrupt stop if we can get that modification request. And then it goes into the mechanical screening, which we've talked about. We're asking for very specific unit-applied materials and then the architectural metal panels. That is a lot, so I am here for questions whenever needed.
Thank you, sir. I think we will go to the staff presentation first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Shannon McGuire, senior planner, please enter to the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 18.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 18.
All right, so the applicant did do a pretty good job, a thorough job of explaining the project, so I won't try, I'll try not to be too redundant. Nothing new since planning commission. So as the applicant did state, they are requesting that, sorry, approval of a PDP to build that 34,000-square-foot, single-story Harley-Davidson dealership. Again, the proposed building will also include that outdoor performance venue as well as that motorcycle rider training area. Like the applicant did state, they are requesting three modifications, and I will go into a little bit more detail later in my presentation. The site is surrounded by commercially-zoned property and uses to the north, east, and the south, as you can see in the aerial here. The property to the west is that vacant property, and it's currently zoned PMIX, and that will be developed with that contractor's garage or luxury storage facility. Again, there was an SUP application, seeking the approval of that outdoor display. That was heard before last week's planning commission. That particular application, or that particular companion application, will be back before this body on March 26th. Both the PDP and the SUP will be joined together at second reading April 9th for final approvals. The Ignite comprehensive plan land use map does identify the site's future recommended land use as commercial. The comp plan identifies this land use as a category that is appropriate, that is in an appropriate location for retail uses. The proposed use is consistent with the commercial land use designation, as recommended by that comp plan. One objective that is established in the comp plan is to stimulate continued economic development by the private sector. This application does meet this goal by developing this long vacant piece of property in our community. In addition to being in compliance with the future recommended land use, the proposed use isn't allowed to use under the existing zoning. It is a less intense use and will generate less traffic than other uses allowed in the CP2 zoning district. So you see the site plan here. Again, the existing zoning is that CP2. The property is about that 3.8 acres, buildings right there at 34,000 square feet. It'll be about 28 feet height, has a floor area ratio of that .2. They are providing 91 standard stalls for ADA stalls. The building materials to be utilized in the design of the proposed building include a combination of metal panels, fiber cement, stone veneer, as well as some glass. Again, the applicant has requested the use of those architectural metal panels. As we've heard before, metal is limited, incidental rule, or other architectural metal siding, as approved by the city council. So as the quality of architectural metal buildings has improved, we're seeing more and more of this material. It is similar and consistent with other approved developments, excuse me, sorry, such as churches, car dealerships, and our recently constructed fire stations. The applicant did hold that neighborhood meeting on December 7th, and there were some concerns, like the applicant did state. Again, you can see the landscaping plan here as well as the site plan. So getting to the first modification, the first modification is that setback for the parking lot here on the south side. As you can see, it's encroaching. Typically, we would require a 20-foot setback along that area, but at the request of the fire marshal, they've included a turnaround area. This is adjacent to Struthers Road. Typically, right-of-way setback along the property line, or sorry, in this specific location, the right-of-way is about 21 feet, 21 and 1/2 feet from the back of the curb, where typically that's about 11 to 12 feet behind the curb. This wider right-of-way will give the appearance of a deeper setback. This modification will not create an adverse effect on safety and will provide a better, better emergency access and better service for our emergency responders. So for these reasons, staff does support this requested modification. We do feel that it is reasonable. The second modification request is to that curbing. Currently, the UODO requires a CG1 curb style around all parking areas to include driveways. Since this is going to be utilized as a training for new motorcycle riders, if the curbing was to be installed per the UDO requirements, it could pose a risk to any wayward riders out there. So the perimeter will be screened with landscaping, and the applicant has proposed a no-rise ribbon curb in place of that curbing. So we still have a curbing type around there, it just won't be that, the tall curb like you see along most commercial parking lots. The remaining, remainder of the site will meet UDO requirements when it comes to curbing. Staff does find this modification to be reasonable, and we do support the requested modification. And then the third modification is to the architectural characteristics when it comes to screening of rooftop mechanical equipments. With larger buildings, constructing that parapet wall to encompass the entire perimeter of the building is a little excessive and not super practical. The proposed screening system is opaque, does provide that adequate screening, while still meeting the intent of the UDO of screening that mechanical equipment. This is the same modification that we've granted in the past, specifically we've granted it to Coleman Equipment, and most recently the tailor-made landing fieldhouse. So for these reasons, we also believe this modification is reasonable, and we do support this modification request. So with that, with the conditions of approval, as I outlined here, and in the staff letter, the application does meet the goals of the Ignite comprehensive plan and the requirements of the UDO and the Design and Construction Manual, and that I can yield for any questions you may have at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay, so it's time for questions for applicant or staff.
Thank you. So I actually don't have a question, a comment. Do you want me to wait until after the public hearings close, then, I guess, right?
Yeah, for comments?
Yeah. Okay, perfect.
Get the questions out. How about the, there's a lot of great renderings, but just, Slish, and just plain-spoken words, we're going to berm the area along Vanderbilt? And then I thought Mr. McGuire said something about screening. What did he mean by that?
Oh, I think his screening was talking about the mechanical screening on top. But yeah, the Vanderbilt area, we're going to basically, normal requirement is just to put landscaping up there per the roadway. We're proposing that we actually increase it up to like a screening level where we add additional plantings, where you almost double the landscape plantings, and then also add that berm in there to give some height and depth to it. So we were out there today and kind of walked it. It's going to give them a decent buffer to get to that area, and I think you'll see it.
And then, since I have you up here, the lot behind it would be straight to the east? That's, that's a conceptual right there that you have right there in front of us, right? That's just some kind of conceptual building? There's not a building there?
It is. There's not a building there yet. We had previously worked with the owner to kind of draw something in there, and so we just wanted to show that it would still function and work with the road layout, so that is just all conceptual. The building here is completed and the building up here, so this is a vacant lot.
But that's the same owner, right?
These two are the same owners, yes.
Yeah, so that's going to be possibly, it looks like maybe office or something along those lines, possibly?
That's where I believe, yep.
So you're comfortable putting office right next to this as well, so?
Yeah, so the benefit of what we did on the elevations of that event space is the event space is probably about six to eight feet down below what would be the finished floor of the back of that office space. And then again, that event space is only going to be utilized on the weekends, and so it's one of those things that it's one of those pieces that it doesn't have a lot of impact, I don't think, to anybody in the business park.
Have access agreements on the current property there to provide access to that lot?
Correct. There's an access agreement that comes between our property here and then all of the roads internally.
Yep. Okay. All right, Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a clarifying question, I don't know if this would be to the applicant or staff. The special use permit, that's only required for displaying the motorcycles outside, the other things, the practice area, the event space, those wouldn't require a special use permit, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that special use permit that will be coming before you here in a couple of weeks, that is solely triggered by the outdoor display. All other uses that are being proposed are uses allowed by right.
Okay, thanks. And then this would probably be for the applicant, probably. So you said the practice area and the event space will only be used on weekends. Is there, is that just by the practice of this particular user, or is there anything that would specifically limit that? Or are you just saying, like, generally, that's how they would operate?
Yes, the training center is weekends only because it's one of those things that the new riders will come out there for a number of periods of hours, four, six, eight hours, and come out there and ride, learn things, and work through it. So it wouldn't work during a normal day to have a trainee and the trainers work on that site. So training, for sure, doesn't happen any other day than the weekends. The site itself, the event space, the only times that they currently hold events or have typically held events is on the weekends, typically on a Saturday nights. We've had some discussions with staff of what starts to classify as an event, and so then we've kind of got to the point of, just like anybody else in the entire business park, if they function in any fashion outside of normal operations of business, then that would be something they would either have to come and get a special event permit if it got to too large of a piece, or, you know, I guess there's nothing that would happen that side. So it doesn't, essentially, it's not going to get to a, we call it an event space, but it's not a large event space. It's basically just a place where people can gather, get together, see the apparel, see the motorcycles, and get together. Most of the time, every time they've done it, it's like a Saturday night.
What you're saying makes sense. I guess my question was more, is there anything in your deed restrictions and the zoning code, anything that specifically prohibits those activities outside of those weekend hours, or is it just kind of what you're expecting based on how the business operates?
I think it's what we're expecting, and then in talking through with staff, I think that's where it goes, that normal operations of business. So the code basically has, and I think Shannon's looked in a little more probably, it's the conversations of what your code allows of if you own a business out there, of what you would do of holding food trucks or something out there. You know, at what level does it start to trigger? And I don't know that there's an exact description, but yes, it's not intended to be a nightly or any piece of it. It's very seasonal, and it's, like I said, Saturdays is what he typically does it right now, but.
That was round my questions. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. Either one, yep.
Mayor, council members, my name is Corey Henry. I'm here on behalf of Chinnery Evans &amp; Nail, the property owners, Hawthorne Property Owners, and that's the LLC that's the holding company for it. So I'm an attorney there, and we are, we've been in regular contact with the developer and specifically Mr. Slish. And so I want to, as I begin my comments this evening, I'll try to keep them brief. I do want to emphasize that we have had some very positive communications as it relates to the additional landscape buffer that has been discussed here this evening, and that's something that I wanted to emphasize, that I do appreciate from both the developer as well as the engineer that is on the, the whole team. They've been in regular contact with us, and so we do appreciate that. That notwithstanding, we do stand in strong opposition to the development as a whole for several reasons, primarily because we believe the development pattern that exists between Struthers Road and Woodschapel Road is not necessarily indicative of what this dealership would be. Primarily, what you have in this area is professional office development, so you've got doctors' offices, you've several medical facilities, financial, of course, attorneys, things of that nature. And so the development pattern, we believe, is not really consistent with the Harley-Davidson dealership at this time. And so we also are concerned slightly with the event space that has been mentioned already and the training facility. What I will state is that at the planning commission, the developer and Mr. Slish had said that those activities would be limited to the weekend, and I believe that is to be a condition on approval. I'm not entirely sure. I didn't see it up there, so I'm not entirely sure if that's still accurate, but it's something that we would request. So while we are in support of the condition that the training facility and event space be only used on the weekends, that doesn't necessarily mean we support the entire development overall. And while we do appreciate the willingness to work with us on a landscape buffer, and I certainly do, and I mean that, that it does go a long way in our view of everything, we still do stand in opposition to the development, primarily just because, again, of the change in character that would exist from what has developed there, and it's something that's really unique. There's not really anything else like that stretch of professional office. Enley Summit, I don't really, can't think of anything in southeast Jackson County that has that long of a stretch of professional office, and something that we believe is very beneficial and is an asset to the community, and something that we want to make sure that we emphasize as we, as we talk about this development. And so that is our primary opposition to it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Council, my name is Pam Shatray, and the building that you see over there, you know, just on Carnegie Drive, it is a Summit Plastic Surgery Center. We have a state-approved ASC in there, and we have, you know, surgeries that go on at least four, three to four times a week. So we have patients that are admitted there for at least a couple of hours before they are discharged after their surgery. So considering what we heard today, I don't know how that is going to affect with our state certification as well as our business in, all in all. So that was our main concern after hearing all the training that would be going on with the business over the weekend or what have you. be going on with the business over the weekend or what have you. So that are, that is our main opposition there, considering the kind of business that happens in Summit Plastic Surgery, it's a surgery center. We see, you know, patients, and plus, there is an orthopedic office that rents over there who intend to also, you know, expand in that area. So for these reasons, we were a little concerned about what we heard today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Jimmy Choto, I own the property right next door to Pam that was just up here speaking. I have three tenants in my building, Summit Pediatrics, Wells Fargo Financial Advisors, and a nonprofit. I, I support growth in Lee Summit, I mean, I pay a lot of money in taxes with owning many properties in all over Lee Summit, and I appreciate the growth and expansion of our city. Do have a concern, as, as others have brought up, just with the flow of what other businesses are near this, with the motorcycle shop. Again, and I support motorcycles, my dad rides a motorcycle, so I'm not opposed to, you know, someone that rides a motorcycle, even a look, tattoos, any of the, any of those things that go on. There is a concern with the, the event space, I mean, as much as I'd love to build a rooftop bar like anybody else, and that'd be a great location to kinda look over the city and see it. You know, as Pam said, they own the building right next door, also own the vacant lot, and they're planning on expanding their, their business to build a, a new surgical center. Having an event space and people coming and going, you know, the concerns are just, so as a business owner, I don't work in my building, but I have tenants that rent, and I certainly hope that a space like a, you know, putting on a dealership like this wouldn't run off tenants, but I probably have probably the most traffic in that area, with my one tenant being Summit Pediatrics, there's many cars that come and go, so I don't know how that would affect it, but I just wanna voice my concern.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I'm unclear, when I see these documents up here, what documents you all actually get, and in the education courses and stuff that I've been taking, one of the things that I've learned that you absolutely wanna see on these documents are professional seals with signatures and dates that you can read. Not that they're obfuscated so that, because the initial document is where you start, and if there are problems down the road, you always go back to the beginning, because that's where you're gonna find the stuff. And on any of these documents that Shannon, I think it was, and that Matthew Schlisch had up here, I didn't see any professional seals, the stamp that goes on the document with the signature and with the date, because that's what you're gonna use to hold them accountable and liable for what they're putting up there. Because what goes on the piece of paper can be totally different than what's out there on the ground. What's on the ground is what governs. They, that could be a cartoon, because what is on the paper may not match what's out there on the ground.
Okay, anybody else? All right, are there any additional questions from council? That's Member Pryor.
Is there any way that we could have a map of the businesses that are here tonight and where it is in relation to this, the Harley-Davidson? Thank you.
So the first person is this building here, the second one is this building here, and then the third one is that building there.
And then where is the event space, or the?
Harley is this red one here.
Which side is the?
Event space is down here in the corner.
Okay, and then what's the side that's closest to the businesses again, is that?
This is that Training Center.
That's the Training Center, okay.
Yeah, it's only used on the weekends, it's vacant.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. With, with respect to some of the public comments that were made specifically regarding medical practices, is there anything in this development that would specifically impair the ability of a medical facility to operate close by? I guess I wasn't, I wasn't really clear on what the concern was, because, like, I know there'll be motorcycles and they have exhaust fumes, but so do all the cars that drive up and down there, I just wasn't sure what was specific to this as opposed to any of the other traffic around there.
I know of no reason why it would impair it, but that's a little bit out beyond my scope.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna say, I don't know anything either, you know, from that standpoint of impacting it, you know, I think we'd go back to that conversation of the traffic in that area. You know, when you're looking out here, 291 has 41,000 cars that generate on their east side every day, you know, and Struther has almost 2,000, and Ralph Powell's like 6,000, so we're generating 60 cars in a peak hour, you know, so I don't, I just don't see that we would do anything that would impact that much impact of what's already going on out there in development-wise.
So there wasn't anything specific that was brought up in the neighborhood meeting about a, a real specific concern for, other than generally noise traffic, but a specific concern about the operation of a type of business? I just wanna make sure I'm not missing anything.
Yeah, I, I don't believe, I think, and they can certainly come back and speak, the only thing I think from our neighborhood meeting, the conversation was this specific use in compliance or comparison to their specific use and them thinking it is a dissimilar operation.
That doesn't fit in with the neighborhood?
That's, that's, I think so, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. I didn't know if we could have like a Google map, just so I can kind of gauge the distance, 'cause that one's hard to see exactly, like, what the distance is from the... Well, I know, but I wanted to see, like, yeah. And then, I don't know if I can ask, are there any patients, I know in the plastic surgery office, are there any patients that stay over the weekend? Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, so you can see from the arrow here, this is gonna be the Attorney's Office right here at 800, the Plastic Surgeons' Office, and then that, the other office that we were speaking at. The Training Facility's gonna be right here. Bulk of the building's gonna be down here with that event space down here, so from a major distance-wise to the plastic facility, from the property line is about 262 feet. To the third building, the third gentleman's gonna be right around that 475 from that property line, and then from the property line of the Training Facility to this building is kinda around that 60 to feet or so.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you very much. And then the lot 3131, that is?
Currently vacant.
Vacant lot, okay.
And there's no plans.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, does, oh, Mr. Elam, yes? Okay, you're good. Does the applicant care to make any further comment?
I think the only comment I'd bring back would be the conversation of, you know, of this sheet. You know, the, the development of this Chapel Ridge Business Park started in the late 90s with a, a plan of growth of many different opportunities, retail, shopping, office, many different uses. As you've seen over the last 25 years, it's developed in, in a multitude of fashions of opportunities that are out there, you know, so, so next to office and medical office and law office and the pieces of it, you have a grocery store. We have a Sonic. You know, you have commercial, I mean, you have a Goddard School, you have a daycare facility that's out there in that facility. So the number of uses out here, while there is a good fair amount of purple that I've indicated that is law office, dental office, and therapy, there is a wider range of uses out there. And as we get down to the heavier corridors of Struther or Woods Chapel, it's indicated, as in most development areas, that's where the growth of those retail-type customer-based uses are gonna be. So, so I guess this is one conversation that we had at the neighborhood meeting, that we said we all had to agree to disagree. We are in a CP2 zoning district where this isn't allowed use by right. You know, the only SUP we're asking for is because Rick likes to roll motorcycles out during the day, so I, you know, I feel like it's a, a use that is compatible with the area, but, but certainly understand their concerns and try to alleviate them with the additional landscaping.
Okay. Councilmember Hodges?
I just had a question, I know you discussed the decibels, but I know motorcycle riders, they like to ride in, I don't know, we call it packs, but, you know, whatever, more than one. So we discussed how much one motorcycle would be, but if they're all traveling together and you got a bunch coming down the road, what does, what would that do noise-wise to the businesses? 'Cause I know that's usually the way it goes, they kinda ride together.
They do, and the question, I guess, and the comment would be, that's the reason I brought this slide up, the EPA. So the EPA allowance for noise distributed by a motorcycle or a vehicle is exactly the same, 80 decibels. So each of those items, so the Harley-Davidson of old, the memories of, of Easy Rider where everybody's smoking their cigarettes and ripping them real loud, is a spot where if you look back, Harley-Davidson's been in trouble over the last 20 years, and they've worked their way out of that to where now they have compliant motorcycles and those pieces of it. So then it goes back to the same idea of, there's 41,000 cars out there on 291, and if you look down in here, it'll tell you there's 121 motorcycles that drive out there on the highway today. And so just because this specific use is gonna be in that specific spot, it would be our opinion that a pack of motorcycles, I think is gonna be 10, you know, or 20, I don't know what that is, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be hundreds of motorcycles in these pieces. But again, Ralph Powell Road has an estimated average daily traffic of 7,000 cars. So it's our opinion that the amount of motorcycles together isn't gonna create noise that is going to outweigh the ambient noise that exists from the two heavily traveled roadways on the east or the west, or even the south side that is Struther out there. So certainly, you'd put more together, there'd obviously be some more sound, but the idea still being, you know, where do you measure it from? You know, is that we go back to this calculation, we were looking at, at the training area, we're gonna have six motorcycles, six to eight probably at the maximum, and we used 80 decibels, which is the maximum it could be, and that's when it's opened up and driving at 35 or 40 miles an hour. We pray to the good Lord that no one hits 35 or 40 on the training facility, and they're gonna be much quieter as they're trying to learn their moves and their pieces of it. So it's our opinion that the training facility will have no real effect on the neighboring properties, because it's a very controlled facility, very, much smaller bikes than whatever everybody, you know, will use trying to get everybody just accommodated to it. So then if you go to the actual facility where someone might be parking or looking at or getting their facility serviced, this 90 feet from the corner to the training facility goes to 288 feet to that nearest corner. You know, so if we go to the Surgery Center, it again, it extends out, if you go to the other pediatrics, it goes further out. So opinions would be is that we're not gonna have masses of people that are gonna ride motorcycles, it's gonna effectively change that noise level to something that is gonna exceed what's allowable by code, which is 65 decibels at the property line. We're not generating anything that's gonna create that noise to cause harm or problem, is our opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? That's Member Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support this application, I mean, it seems to me like the use is permitted by right, all the things that there really were any concerns about in terms of the practice space, the event space, those don't require any kind of, kind of modification in this zoning. The only thing that's a modification with a special use permit that's gonna come back to us later for being able to display the bikes on the sidewalk, we can have a separate discussion on when that comes before us. The only modifications they were asking for are things like screening the HVAC system, which is a pretty standard modification that we do, so I, I can understand the concerns of the neighboring owners, but I don't see anything in this application that violates the zoning that's there. To me, it kinda makes sense as a transitional use, because you've got all those medical offices, professional services, and then on the other side of Struther, you've got like the K-1 racing and, and Skyzone, and other, any more entertainment? Uses Frontier Justice, and this kinda seems like kind of a middle ground between those kinda high-traffic entertainment uses and the more quiet office uses, so it, it seems pretty reasonable to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. So I'm pretty sure I would support this. I, I really don't feel like it would really generate more noise than, than what they're gonna get from the highway. And I do feel like, as Councilmember Shields said, it's kind of a in-between business from having a lot of traffic, which this doesn't necessarily seem like it's going to generate a ton of traffic, especially during the week, so I'm torn, but I'm pretty, I'm leaning towards I would support this, so thank you.
Thank you. Comments? I, I think it's a retail corner, type of corner, being on Struther and high visibility, so to think that it's gonna be an office, I think it would have been an office already if, if, if that was its destiny on this location at 470 and Struther Road, so, and Ralph Powell. So I'll be supporting it as well. With that said, I'm gonna ask, who's reading this one? Councilmember Edson, please read Bill number 24-025.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to the second reading, Bill number 24-025, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for land located at 3100 northeast Carnegie Drive, all in accordance with provisions of Chapter 33, the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you, I have a motion, move to second reading, Bill number 24-20, 24-025 by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? I will just add the, please berm that up, and I know that you have the ability to do that, I've seen it before, so that's, that was my biggest concern, so. All right, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. Oh, we have, there we go. Please record the vote, it's six, I'm sorry, six in favor, one against, and one recusal, so it passes. Thank you all. Next would be, close the regular session again, we're going to open the public hearing in the matter of special use permit for priority auto repair at 1020 Southeast Hamblin Road. Sam? I'm gonna ask, how do you say his name? Digivani, there it is, I said it. Is the applicant, but all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right, does the applicant have a presentation?
My project pales in comparison to the, to the last one, but we're, my name is Sam Digivani, our address is 1020 Southeast Hamblin Road. We're opening a, would like to open a full-service auto repair facility at that location. I'm available for any questions here, but at, at this point, I'll defer to, to staff, if that's okay?
Thank you, yep. Thank you. Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Shannon McGuire, Senior Planner. Please enter the record, Exhibit A, list of exhibits 1 through 18.
Please enter into the record, Exhibit A, 1 through 18.
All right. So, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for a major automotive repair. That special use permit is requested for a duration of 10 years. Now, the applicant is currently operating a minor automotive repair from the site. As you can see from the aerial here, the properties to the northwest and south are all zoned PI and have industrial uses, and the property east across to Hamblin is zoned to PMICs. That's the, the site of the Home Depot out there. So, the Unite Comprehensive Plan promotes various strategies for building long-term and economic prosperity and resiliency within our city's economy. One objective established by this comprehensive plan is to stimulate the continued economic development and investment and reinvestment by private sector. This subject is meeting that goal with the applicant's proposed investment in, into our Site plan here, the overall site is just over three tenths of an acre, about three, or about .35 acre, about 3.5 acres. There is, the existing building is roughly 4,700 square feet, and it was a metal building constructed in 1986. Currently, like, like I said, they are, are operating that minor automotive repair. The UDO does make a distinction between minor and major automotive repairs. Both uses are allowed in the zoning district. One is allowed by right, with the other requiring a special use permit. So, they are asking for that special use permit so they can step up to that full automotive repair. So, as you can see here, the existing building is a building, they are not proposing any exterior renovations at this time. Some of the surrounding buildings, again, got Home Depot here, the new, Aldi's building, as well as some, some metal buildings, industrial and automotive type uses, as well as the Doggy Daycare Camp Bowwell. A neighborhood meeting was held on December 27th. No members of the public attended that neighborhood meeting. So with that, the conditions of approval, as I have outlined here, and in the staff letter, this application does meet the goals of the Unite Comprehensive Plan, as well as the requirements of the UDO and the Design and Construction Manual, and I can yield for any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Questions for staff or the applicant? Councilmember Shields?
Thank you. Just one question. Is the 10-year term pretty standard for this kind of thing? Because I feel like sometimes we talk about 20-year SUPs, sometimes we talk about different length.
So, yes, a 10-year term is standard for this type of, of operation.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Okay, is, are there any additional questions from council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Yep. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Hearing no further questions or comments, Councilmember?
This one's mine.
Shields, would you please read Bill number 24-026?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading, Bill number 24-026, an ordinance granting a special use permit for a major automotive repair facility in District PI on land located at 1012 Southeast Hamblin Road for a period of 10 years, in accordance with Article 6 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24-026, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you all. One more public hearing. I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 5C. This is a preliminary development plan, Jim Hubbard Insurance Office, 111 Southwest Rain Tree Plaza Drive, Bearcat Property Holdings LLC is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right, before we begin, Councilmember Felker?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'll be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Dan Finn, 1270 North Winchester, Olathe, Kansas, 66061. I'm a civil engineer with Phelps Engineering. With me here tonight is Jim Hubbard, who can speak to any business questions you may have, as well as Kevin Hardy, who can speak to any questions regarding building materials. This project is for Jim Hubbard Insurance. It's located at 111 Southwest Rain Tree Plaza Drive. As shown on the screen, it is the red box on that screen. If you go to the north a little bit further, you would see 150 Highway. This is actually one of the entry ramps from 150 Highway and 291, so generally, it's at the southwest corner of 291 and 150 Highway. The existing zoning to the south is planned industrial. The existing zoning of the site, as well as the areas to the west, to the north, and to the east are CP2. Existing uses around the facility include self-storage to the south and a car wash to the north. This is a platted lot. The lot's approximately .67 acres. The proposal includes a building that's approximately 1,800 square feet. Jim Hubbard is currently leasing space in Lee Summit, and with the approval of this project, he will be purchasing the property and built and constructing his own building here in the city as well. There's an existing access that's already been established via plat at the northeast corner of the lot. There's also cross-access that's been established via the plat through the property, so this drive will be constructed continuing to the west for the next development to occur and connect, as well as it will extend to the east when the development to the east is constructed. Trash will be located at the southeast corner of the site. It's anticipated that the utility transformer will be located there as well. With screening as necessary, the enclosure will meet the city ordinance regarding the masonry and screening requirements. Parking's located along the north side of the building, as well as the east side of the building. Landscaping is being provided per the ordinance. There is the frontage requirement landscaping that's being installed, as well as a buffer to the south. There's an existing stormwater detention facility that's below grade to the southeast that was installed and planned for the development of this lot, as well as the surrounding lots. The proposed impervious area for this development is less than what was accounted for when that detention facility was installed, so no additional detention is needed with this The building primarily consists of a, of a stucco finish, a composite roof, and some stone veneer. This is kind of one view looking kind of from the northeast side, and then looking from the northwest side. With this project, we're not asking for any code modifications, and with that, we're here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. We will do the staff presentation, and we'll have questions.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record, Exhibit A, list of exhibits 1 through 20.
Please enter into the record, Exhibit A, 1 through 20.
I'll just give an overview of some of the finer points of this application, so as not to replicate any previous testimony. So here's an overview of the surrounding area. As you can see, it's a bit of a transition at that southeast quadrant of M-150 and 291. You've got the commercial node here at, at the hard corner of those highways, transitioning to residential to the southwest, and that industrial facility, the mini warehouse facility, Storage Mart, to the south. The comprehensive plan does identify this area as commercial in nature. The office use, profession, more specifically, professional offices are, uses permitted by right under the existing CP2 zoning, so the proposed use is very much in keeping with the zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan, recommended land use that I just mentioned. The 1,800 square foot building will be a single-story. There's adequate, more than adequate parking provided to satisfy the, the demand for the use. These are the kind of more, just the basic elevations, transitioning to the renderings that you just saw. There's only one condition of approval associated with this application. There were, as related to the planning and commission meeting, there were no members of the public that came out and spoke in opposition, and there were no members of the public that showed up to the neighborhood meeting that was held to discuss the project. So, I will yield any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or applicant? Any, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from council?
I would point out that when it says preliminary development dated November 14, 2023, somebody needs to make sure that that plan has a professional land surveyor or professional engineers stamp on it, and that it's dated and signed, and that the date is legible.
Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Seeing none, Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number 24-027?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of Bill number 24-027, an ordinance approving preliminary development plan for land located at 111 Southwest Rain Tree Plaza Drive, all in accordance with provisions of Chapter 33, Unified Development Ordinance, Code of Ordinances of the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number 24-027, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Council discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes 7-0 with one recusal. Thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Takes us to public comments. We have Ms. Volanwyter here. Volanwyter?
I had made a request that one time, is it ready to go? Yeah. I had made a request that one time to know who was the individual or individuals that were continuing to charge me with trespassing, when at some point they had to know it wasn't I'm starting off with this, Teresa Volanwyter, 52, 01, Northeast Maybrook Road. Discovering the truth via exposing the lies. I'm using this document because it states that Stephanie Mullins initially believed it was a city worker setting off the motion of her ring cameras as they had recently been doing some measuring. While watching the video, she observed Volanwyter. So, she, the first people that were out there were actually the City of Lee Summit folks on December 1st. So I want to show these pictures because, yeah, the City of Lee Summit was doing some measuring that day, December 1st, 2022. That was the day I got charged with trespassing on a neighbor's property. And that mark matches up with this mark, and this mark matches up with another mark. So, obviously, the city had folks out there that were marking right-of-way. And this is a really interesting one. There's a mark right there, pink mark right there. This is a case where what you're seeing on the ground is different than what you see on the plat of Bob Anderson. So this would not close, if this is the quarter-quarter line, and I marked it with bricks, in another picture, those are going to be gone because somebody doesn't like to have that quarter-quarter line marked so, so that everybody knows where it is. But if you, if you continue this line, those aren't going to meet until the west side of that power pole. Here's the line again there, and then here's another mark in the middle of the road. Measure from the middle of the road out for your right-of-way. The reason I got this one up here is because these are centerline markers, and lo and behold, that is a City of Lee Summit truck coming up the road, Water Utilities. And he obviously sees me. I'm in the road, on the pavement of the road. He, this is him again, and I'm right here on the road taking pictures of this evidence. I want this evidence. So, yeah, I'm in the road taking pictures. This one I put here, this is December 4th. So, yeah, I went out and I did my own painting. And this is where Collins Mullins put their no trespassing sign. They do not own any property south of the quarter-quarter line. That is south of the quarter-quarter line. That quarter-quarter line is pretty well-established on every survey that has been done. This is one of their cartoons that got put out here. Now, this picture, this sign, because they used to always have it way up here. That no trespassing sign of theirs has moved a total location and a position has changed a total of nine times. This mark is interesting. If this is a sanitary sewer where it goes through, you got to have room on this side, and you got to have room on this side. That's an easement. If that's a centerline, a sanitary sewer line requires an easement, and it's not just a line. It's so many feet on one side and so many feet on the other, generally 15 feet on either side, it might be seven and a half. But where is that going to be? That's going to be in Teresa's property. Those documents for some, from December 1st, that the city had been out there marking right-of-way on that land. I continued to get charged with trespassing all the way up to June 13th of 2023. Why? I want to know who was doing that. That is so obviously wrong. So, yeah, I'm making another request. Who kept doing that after they, somebody from the city even put the marks on the ground? What is on the ground governs. I realize those people aren't surveyors. The City of Lee Summit does not have professional land servers, surveyors on staff, and if they did, they'd lose their license more than likely because they would be doing stuff they're not supposed to be doing.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volanwyter. All right, do you want to go into presentations, or you want a break? All right, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll be back at, let's make it 8:05.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, play order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in, and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically, what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here, and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there, and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically, what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding, or picking, or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's the finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then, once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens, and our citizens do go into crises. They do have mental health crises, and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed, qualified, mental health professionals housed within our police department, and they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health-related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day, listen for those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, en route.
Officer's en route, 914.
So typically, I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown, and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network. Who's close to you? If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need, and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summitt Police, how can we help you?
My husband has...
In 2020, we had 722 mental health-related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health-related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available, as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here. We exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us. Say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis, and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago on my personal journey with mental health, and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help, and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations, and she really felt that she had nobody. And getting to know her story, and getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person, and they responded immediately, and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour, and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody, and nobody would show up for them and show them, you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
When the person called on the phone, she said that there was a dinosaur walking down her road. Of course, we had to go out and check that out. We get out there, and it was a big African tortoise, probably 60 pounds, walking down the road. When they walked, they really stand up tall, so I could see why she thought it was a dinosaur. I'm Rodney Wagner. I'm the manager of Lee Summitt Animal Control. So as you can see, we get all sorts of animals here. You have some guinea pigs off to the side. All the windows up here are animals that are adoptable right now. Every one of these dogs is ready to go and ready for adoption. And the same thing with our cats over here. A lot of cool cats in here now, so. So this is our three-acre lot we have out back, and this is where we do all the walking of dogs, exercise. We also have a side yard off to the side over there, so we can let them run loose. They can run together, and then we have what's called play groups. Kind of like having a bunch of kids. Here's our vet room. We have a vet that comes out twice a week. This is our sally port where we bring the animals into. This is one of our animal control trucks, and we can hold up to six animals. We have a lift on the other side to put big animals in. We actually have temperature gauges in here and in the truck to tell us how hot it is. Once it gets to a certain temperature, we bring all the animals back here immediately. So this actually has traps in it, but we do a lot of wildlife trapping. I mean, a lot, so. Bats, pot-bellied pigs, horses, cows, emus, a lot of reptiles. We had a citizen one time that had over 200 reptiles in his basement. Caymans and alligators in here that are four or five feet long, you can't keep those. And people do, and they're surprised when they can't keep them. I'm like, really? You're surprised you can't have an alligator in your house? Our main goal here is public safety and also the safety of the animals, and we have very dedicated people back there, and they definitely stay here for the love of the animals, which also includes getting them adopted out. We'll have about 4,000 impounded animals a year, probably about close to 2,000 are dogs and cats. The cats and dogs, when they get impounded here, they go on a five-day hold, and then after the five days, if the owner doesn't show up, then we can put them up for adoption. Adopt a animal here is actually really simple. You just come in, look for whatever animal you're looking for, find the right pick. You have to go to the adoption room up there and see if you get along with them. You spend as much time as you want to in there. From that point on, it's just a matter of making sure they're spay or neutered, and all their vaccinations up to par, and they're good to go. We have a very high adoption rate because we try everything in our power to get animals adopted out. We have Heart of America, a humane society that we do a lot of adoptions through. And then we also have other groups. We have some people that literally will just look all over the country for somewhere for a dog to go, and we sent dogs up into South Dakota, North Dakota, Washington State. So it's actually, it's a huge united effort to get all these animals home.
Tarzan's got lots of energy. Hazel's got a weird meow. Bellbell, she wants nothing to do with the other cats. She'll kind of get her grumpy face going.
And the good thing about the people here is that they get all their friends to get animals, too. All of us have probably the limit of all the animals that we can have at home. They are huge animal lovers. If it was up to the people here, we'd have 15 cats running around in here. We had a citizen one time out there, and he was bathing his two nine-foot-long boa constrictors in the front yard. Apparently, I was gardening some attention, and so we went out there and had to talk to him about that. Do I do this job? Dude, I love this job. I grew up on a farm, and taking care of that many animals, you can't help but like animals. This is just like fancy farming. You're just bringing the animals in here, taking care of them, and finding them homes, and yeah, absolutely animal lover.
I'm Assistant Chief Jim Eden.
And I'm Battalion Chief Ben Hicks.
And today, we're at Lee Summitt Fire Station 3. Fire Station 3 was part of the 2016 No Tax Increase General Obligation Bond for Public Safety Initiatives. The station was built and occupied in August of 2020. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we've not been able to give tours or have an actual ribbon-cutting. So we want to invite you in today to give you the opportunity to see what goes on within Lee Summitt Fire Department Station.
Let's go take a tour. This is our admin side of the facility. We use this side mainly for offices. We have a lot of work during the day, whether it's training or during reports, or just generally taking care of the shift that we need to do. At this particular station, Station 3, we do have an assistant chief that works out of here. That person has their own office where they need to manage what's going on throughout the day with the shift and staffing, as well as running calls out of here. The captain has their own office as well. What the captain does is, at this specific station, is in charge of both the fire truck that's here as well as the ambulance. And so with all those personnel responsibilities, as well as running calls and reports, that's where they work out of. And generally, for the rest of the crew, which is somewhere around five to six individuals, we have rooms where I report, and we have additional training rooms and other rooms where people can work. Walking into our living area, I think it's important to recognize that we work 48-hour shifts. So in the evenings, after 5 o'clock, after work is done, we may have the opportunity to catch a game or something else, as long as we're not running calls. And this gives us the opportunity to do that. When we go into our kitchen, I think this gives you a great reason to know why we go to the grocery store. When you see fire trucks at the grocery store, what we're doing. Also, for two days working for 48 hours, we buy all our meals at the grocery store, and then we come in here and cook, just like you guys do at home. So everybody has their own fridge on each shift, as well as their own pantry, and then we cook those meals here. Going into the sleeping side of things, we've got a couple of different things that are significant. We have our own laundry room, which, again, is important when we're here for 48 hours. The opportunity to wash and clean our clothes and bedding is very important for hygiene. And walking into where our beds are, we keep the sleeping quarters over on one side of the building. It gives us both easy access out to where our fire apparatus are, as well as kind of keeping it a little bit quieter for those people that have been up all night running calls. We have 11 bedrooms here at this station, and the reason we built it with so many bedrooms is we want to give ourselves as a city the opportunity to expand. So if we need to put another apparatus here or numerous other people working at this station, that's already in place as far as infrastructure goes, and we don't need to go back and try to make it bigger or better. And that's really important for us, especially because the old station was so small. Back out on the apparatus floor, we have doors facilitated as many places as possible so that way, when we're sleeping at night and a call comes out, we can make our way out fairly quickly to get out onto the truck if we need to and run a call. On the other side of the station, we kind of have other stuff that we may want to keep separated if we want to. Physical fitness is very important to us as firefighters. So in order to better ourselves and make sure we're as healthy as we can to do this job, we have our own gym facility here that we kind of go throughout the day when we can and get an opportunity to come in and work out. Our goal when we run calls, when we get back to the station after calls, our goal is to get ready to go back as soon as we can to run another call. So we have the opportunity or capability here to fill up our air tanks. You see firefighters, where the big air tanks on their backs, and they use those in a fire. We can come back and fill those up and make sure that we're ready to go again when we're wanting to go run another call. We have our own workshop here. We work on a lot of our tools and making sure that everything's clean and operational, and this gives us the capability to do that, again, to make sure that we have everything we need and we're as capable as we can to be running calls throughout the city. Cancer prevention is very important in the fire service right now. Because of that, we have an extractor machine, and what this does is gives us the capability, when we come back from a fire, we can put our bunker gear into this machine and get all that really nasty crud off of our gear, again, kind of getting back to that cancer prevention mode, allowing us to be as clean as we possibly can for the next call. Finally, is our bunker gear room. We each have our own individual locker. This gives us the opportunity to store our gear when we're not here working in between shifts, as well as keep a clean extra set on here in case we do run a fire and we need to clean our current gear. Typically, this is where your day starts off at the fire station. You come in and get your gear and put it on wherever you're working that day, and then you end the same way, bringing your stuff back to your locker to go home after working. This is Med 3. This ambulance just currently moved into the station from Station 7. Station 3, since we've had it built, has turned into one of our busiest stations in the city. Therefore, we wanted to provide the best care and the closest unit as we could. So we moved one of our ambulances up, and this became Med 3 for this particular instance. Out of this station, we also have Pumper 3, and that's the fire apparatus that they utilize to run the calls on this west end of the city. The last vehicle that you see is the chief's vehicle. We have two shift chiefs on shift every day, and they split the city. And this chief running out of this station typically covers the west and south area of the city, while our chief of Station 2 covers kind of that northeast section of our city.
Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order. Before we get started, Mr. Elam, we have a visitor in the crowd. I just met him, Mr. Moore. Do you know something about him, Councilmember Felker?
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you very much. Council members, I'll just bring your attention to Mr. David Moore, who's in the back seat. He's actually the son-in-law of one of my law partners, Gail Evans. And Mr. Moore is the town manager. Is it Stratham or Strathem? Stratum, New Hampshire, and visiting with his family. But again, town managers, seeing how we do it here, probably some things we could learn from him, and maybe we might share a few things with him, and maybe we'll just, we might just list an FTE form at any time. We could just have council, I can make a motion, or, you know. No, we're glad you're here. Thank you so much. Hope you feel welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Gail Evans is your mom?
No.
Huh?
No.
Mother-in-law, okay. Yeah, that was one of the first attorneys I ever went to. That was a long time ago. All right, thank you. Mr. Elam, we are on presentations. We've got a presentation on the update for the downtown market plaza financing plan and presentation of contracting implementation items, and then you've got re-ordinances, I think, to go with it, so.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. And what we are here to talk about today is really, I'll say, four topics that are all very interrelated to each other, which is why we decided to put the presentation first and then go from there. So I'm going to start talking about our contracts that we currently have in place. We do have a change order for GMP 1 that I'll talk about. We have GMP 2 and GMP 3, and then we'll roll into the financing discussion overall and the updates from the presentation that was given on February 6th, I believe, and go from there. So with that, I'm going to talk about the change order first because we had gone with a construction manager at risk project. we had gone with a construction manager at risk project. And change orders are limited in that process, but they are not eliminated. We do have change order number one for our scope of work that we are calling GMP 1. That is our public utility easements. The bulk of this change order is really related to added scope, and that's kind of the key difference with this delivery method versus others is this change order is necessary because we actually added a large amount of sanitary sewer work to the project that was not included previously. That sanitary sewer work is part of the South Prairie Lee Sewer Project, Capital Improvement Plan Project. But we had advanced some work, so it coordinated more, and we limited the impact to Second Street primarily. We limited that impact on that closure. So we did also run into a pretty significant utility conflict with the large box that we were putting, the large storm sewer box. We had some, some information regarding where the sanitary sewer location was that didn't quite match up in the field, and we ended up having to put a sanitary sewer temporarily through our storm sewer box in order to make everything work in the time being until the rest of that project can get completed as well. So that was a pretty significant change to the scope. And then, as a result of the demolition, again, we have uncovered a little bit more of the contaminated soils than what the original plan showed. So that's kind of a small, minor amount of this change order. The change order amount is almost $836,000, and it does fall outside of the construction manager's risk. Moving on to GMPs 2 and 3s. GMP 2 is the Farmers Market in the Plaza. GMP 3 is Johnson Street and Third Street Improvements. Both of those projects were advertised on December 29th. They were, they were open from December 29th to January 19th. You can see where they were advertised, and we also added links to the city website and notifications of the city website as how to get connected with the Building Connected Bidding Platform, and it was open to all interested parties. GMP 2, there was 125 bids among 31 different trade areas, and the contract price is $22.5 million and a little bit of change. And again, that is the Farmers Market in the Plaza area and the bulk, and the bulk of the project overall. For Johnson and Third Street, we had 18 bids among the five trade areas, and that project is for a little over $3 million for the total project scope. So I'm going to, I'm going to go on now, and this is the project uses. You've seen the project uses before. This is an update from the February 6th discussion that we had. And you'll notice that that was roughly $42 million at that point, and now the overall project cost, as I'm showing it, is, is $44 million. And that is primarily driven from the land acquisition and this additional change order. So the land acquisition that was included in the last spreadsheet did not include the additional AT&amp;T property that was purchased. And so that purchase is now included in the land acquisition number, and then the change order for the added scope associated with the sanitary sewer. So, so that's how you end up with that $44 million. Again, you can see the contract amounts, GMP 1 plus the, the construction change order number one, GMP 2, GMP 3. And then again, this is the overall project budget, so it does include all the soft costs. That's the architecture, engineering design, that's the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, and that's, that's permits, that's testing and inspections, that's, this is the whole project. And then we do have a number in here for overall project contingency as we move forward in order to make up that $44 million. So this financing plan, this, this is an update of what was presented, again. And this has our secured funding on there. Our capital improvement plan funding has been updated. And so those are the parts of the project based off of the bids that we received that are going to be funded through our capital improvement plan. Overall, so they are, they are green, and that, that total is a little over $24 million of the project is, is funded. And then we do have the cash from the general fund reserve. There was a special finance and budget committee meeting to talk about that. Previously, we had shown $5 million on that. Based off of the direction from the city, from that committee, we put $7 million in here for consideration by, by the council. And then in order to get the, to make up that balance, it is up with a $13 million special obligation bond issuance. So rewinding the tape a little bit, at the February 6 meeting, that gap that we were looking to solve was 24.1 million. So we got that gap down to $20 million through a variety of really where the capital improvement plan funding was coming from, as well as the addition of the AT&amp;T property, a little bit, I know it's kind of confusing because it's an addition and a subtraction on there. But really, it is kind of a shifting of some of those categories, and this is the, the final gap right now for the project, is this $20 million. So what's before you tonight is the first readings of the change order number one, GMP number two, and GMP number three. Those are immediately after this. And what we are seeking direction on is final direction on these project sources and uses to come back with a budget amendment. And when I say final budget amendment, that would be the dollar amount decided by the council for the cash and the dollar amount to move forward with issuing a special obligation bonds on that. Those would come back through a budget amendment process. And so there, there is not a budget amendment on the agenda tonight. And then after the budget amendment, and probably at the same meeting or very close to it, we would have an ordinance to issue those special obligation bonds. And as we discussed previously, the actual issuing of those bonds takes about three months. We do have cash flow currently, and, but we do need to secure the cash, secure the, the funds in order to ensure that, that we're able to, to pay for the construction costs as we move forward. So there's a little bit of runway there for these, but it's, we will wait until the last possible moment to issue those bonds. The remaining slides are really just reminder slides. These are the same slides that were in the presentation from last time. So again, this is discussion over the general fund balance and where those currently sit. This is updated. This is the bond term and debt service schedule that we discussed, and what this shows here is we're assuming it's the 20-year issuance. The number has been adjusted for the project fund of $13 million from '19, and that's an annual debt service payment per million dollars of $70,000 or $910,000 on that annual debt service. And then the comparison to the downtown revenues, based off of the projections here, the downtown source revenue is a little over $3.5 million of revenue created from the downtown area. So again, the bond issuance, this is a repeat from last presentation as well. Issued by the city, no public vote, and it's an annual appropriation of the city to repay. And so with that, I am ready to answer questions.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Been working on this a while. So we've filled in some of these line items that we've had question marks on, such as the general fund, so, Councilmember Lovell.
Thank you. What was the original, I'm just going back, what was the original delta we were trying to solve for? So when we were in finance, I think it was finance and budget, what, was it 40 million? Like total project costs that we had estimated?
In September, it was 42 million total project cost that we had estimated.
Just trying to remember, because I know we had a number before us, I think, when we were going through that, just what it, and I, I remember recalling, like, hey, we don't even have the contract, the full contract yet. And so I was just trying to remember what the difference was between that number. I don't think it was September. I think it was just a couple of weeks ago, wasn't it?
So the, the numbers in the, a couple of weeks ago, that delta was $24.1 million, to, to answer the question directly.
And what is it now?
20.
20, okay.
Thank you. I'm Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to speak briefly to the, the amount coming from the general fund balance that we did have a good discussion on finance and budget about that. Ryan, would you put up the slide that showed the 25%, 35% fund balance numbers? So, you know, we talked about that we could go all the way up to $11 million and still be, you know, within that, just hitting that ceiling, but that maybe we wanted to have a little bit more wiggle room than that so we could look at some other city priorities. But we wanted to make sure that the full council had a chance to see that, think it over, and see if that $7 million number felt appropriate. So I just kind of wanted to raise that to see if anyone had any objections or if you guys were happy with the work the committee had done there.
Thank you. Felker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Shields. Appreciate a little bit of feedback on that. I was just, and I'm grateful we have the same slide up again from last time, just to give us, you know, put our minds back where we were a couple of weeks ago when we were thinking about this. I don't think I have a problem with the 7 million. I mean, so that would, I guess, based on these numbers, keep us, our balance would be somewhere around 30, oh, 34, something like that would be the, the, the raw number, 34, 37 million. Yeah, yeah, and you're right. The percentage would still be higher than our top end of our, where we like to be on a maximum for the general fund. So if we're looking for feedback, I, I'm, I'm certainly not opposed to that 7 million. Just a couple of questions, and I, I think I asked something to this effect last time. So part of my thinking as well, as we, excuse me, talk about issuing the special obligation bonds, really, the two questions just come back to my mind is, okay, we now have an additional layer to our annual debt service, and I think the, the column you showed had it like 910,000 per year. So I just want to reiterate or have this dialogue again that it, that, that addition is not of, of any concern in terms of our capacity to handle, to service our debt, especially in light of the fact that we still have a number of general revenue, you know, general obligation bonds, excuse me, that'll, will be issuing as part of the 187, how to get this number right, 186 million that we, that the voters authorized. So that's my question. We're still confident that this addition doesn't create undue strain on our ability to service our debt currently and with the projection of what those general obligation bonds will require of us in years to come, so.
Yes, I could say we're confident, but I would also like our Director of Finance and our Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning, and possibly our Bond Council to at least waive.
I'd love, I think for, just for the sake, I mean, this is all for the citizens, and I think, you know, giving us, them the chance to hear and listen and know our expertise is all behind it and confident we're moving in the right direction.
Betty Worleman, Finance Director. So the geo-debt that you're talking about, the 186 million, gets repaid from our debt service property tax levy, and this bond issue would not be drawing from that.
Different source.
Right. This is a special obligation bond that would use different revenue sources.
So what, and maybe I misunderstood that earlier on. Is it simply pulled from general revenue, or is it, what, what's going to service this debt?
Yeah, yes. It would be pulled from general revenue, and the basis is a pledge of a portion of the revenue generated within the downtown core area. So the,
Yep, you're going to go to it.
Yeah, so the, the downtown core area, the comparison to the downtown town revenues, throughout that, that whole downtown core, and these estimates are, I'll say, probably pretty conservative on the property tax side. It generates about $3.5 million of revenue from that downtown area. So it would be essentially a pledge to pay out of the, the general fund.
So we say, I mean, the, the slide you're showing now is just to kind of help us see that's what that part of town generates, but it's not as if we, as a, I mean, help me understand, would it be in fact that isolated, that we're going to use that revenue, those revenue streams and like earmark them to come pay the special obligation bonds back? Or we still just, you know, that money goes into the general fund anyway, and so we're just pulling it from the general fund, but we're trying to, to understand our ability to do this. That information, certainly for me, is helpful, but.
David Bush, Chief Counsel of Economic Development and Planning. I think what you just said is probably a decent summary of what we're proposing. We're not proposing, and we won't be creating a separate bucket of funds. So when we're looking at the downtown area revenues, it's not like we're going to isolate those revenues in a special fund and then only make payments from that special fund. This was basically just to give you a point of comparison, like I explained at the, at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, to, to give you a frame of reference for the, the volume of revenue that's generated for the city from the downtown area just from these two sources as compared to the annual debt service, that 910,000 or whatever that number was. It's, it's something to sort of measure. So as a decision maker, if you're sitting there thinking, okay, if we have this debt service load that we're adding to our budget, how does that compare to something? What can I, you know, what's the frame of reference? Frame of reference being the revenue generated for the city from the downtown area as a point of comparison. And so the annual debt service that we project is needed is substantially less than the revenues just generated from the downtown area, but we're not going to be creating a separate fund and paying it only from that fund. Technically, it just comes from the general fund when we make the, the annual payments.
Okay, and I think that, that's really important for us to understand where, from where are we paying this?
General fund is the answer, right.
Okay. On this slide, I think we probably talked about this a little bit a couple of weeks ago. This is where we're at. This is the conservative estimate of where we're at now after, and we have, we'll call public components and obviously some, you know, to be determined, nothing set in stone, private components of the development that would happen. Have there been any projections of what these numbers could look like? Let's say if only the public components are built out versus the best-case scenario if all the private components are, you know, two extremes. Do we see where this number might go?
Right, the answer is yes. I don't have that here with me tonight, but we have produced that in connection with the application that we've made to the Missouri Development Finance Board. If you, you may or may not recall, this may go back two years or so, but you,
Brownfield stuff?
Not quite. So you actually authorize, you passed a ordinance, I think it was, authorizing us to prepare an application to the Tax Credit for Contribution Program with the Missouri Development Finance Board. We've made that application. We've made an initial presentation, and as part of the package of documents associated with that application, we included a set of spreadsheets that answers the question that you just asked. I don't have that here tonight, but it does exist, and it's part of a public document that we submitted to that state agency.
Would it be safe to say that that document on its low end shows a project, a projected number that's large enough to equal this 3.5 plus the 910? I'm just curious, I guess I'm just looking, is this going to pay for itself? That's the, from a citizen's standpoint?
Like the, within, let me go to the map here. So are you talking, when you say, will it pay for self, pay for itself, are you talking about the new revenues generated for the city just from the blue area, the project itself?
Plus, plus what we're saying is a frame of reference, that, this red, red area.
The answer is probably not. We won't really know the answer to that question until a, a slate of private development is presented to us, and then it's, you know, and we evaluate it, and then we present it to you. And we anticipate, based on conversations we've had with the developer, they will be making an incentive request, and it will be some sort of public-private partnership. And so, and I'm projecting forward to answer, you know, procedurally how we answer your question. There will likely be a conceptual presentation at some point to evaluate those issues like you typically see with a private development that has an incentive request, and all of the numbers associated with that slate of private development, whatever that may be, we'll have a better answer to your question, and we'll be able to sort of, I, I can do what I normally do when we have a project proposed, run my own spreadsheets to, to analyze what we think the revenue generated for the city would be. So we'll have a better answer when we actually have a proposed private development.
Okay.
If I could add just a little bit on to that, with, with this project as well, and given the timeframe that it will be an asset for the community, I think it's safe to say that at some point, it will have paid for itself over time. Now, with, is that within the first 20 years, or is it 25, or is it 30? We can run those, those projections out and get a little bit. We can run those, those projections out and get a little bit more accurate on that, but I think I'd actually maybe like, if Wes or Brandon could talk a little bit about the spin-off effects of the area from a project like this, that might be, be a little helpful as well. It's difficult to calculate, so it's a little bit more anecdotal, but we may be able to see trends over time doing a look back versus the look forward.
Sure, yeah.
Mike, and let me add one thing to, to build on what he just said, which is actually a really good point. When I answered your quest, your initial question, will it pay for myself? Well, if
How much do you charge?
Wow, how many things that I just twisted together there. Will it, will it pay for itself? I was, to be honest, I was thinking of the time horizon that I usually use with my spreadsheets, which is like fifteen or twenty years. Will it pay for, pay for itself? Will it generate sufficient revenue to service those bonds during that twenty-year slice of time? No, that's really what I was asking. But Ryan's point is a good one, which is, we talked about the useful life of this asset would be, you know, fifty years, a hundred years. Will it eventually generate enough revenue for the city to recoup everything that it puts into the construct, the debt funding for the construction of the project? Yes, ultimately it will, and, and beyond, if it's successful, as we hope. But I was answering the question of just, you know, that limited repayment period.
Brandon Buckley with Lane Four Property Group. It's a great question. With any project, you know, we've worked on, there's always that question of, you know, what is the, the communal benefit? I've tried to go back and look at some projects we completed, and go back and, you know, you look at several different income streams, property tax, sales tax, within a certain district. It is really hard to track for a project that already exists and is completed. So I feel it'd be somewhat disingenuous to, to come to the, you know, City Council today and say, hey, this is what the tax impact is going to be, because there are still a lot of unknowns. You know, if we bring in a hotel with sixty rooms versus eighty rooms, or a restaurant that does two million versus six million, there's just so many variables at this point. But what I can tell you is, from looking at some of those older projects, generally, you know, homes that are within a, you know, three to five-minute, you know, walk or drive, so in close proximity to the project, those homes usually sell for twenty percent above their, their asking price compared to other similar homes that are outside that, that project area. So when you add that, you know, to the, the area around the, the project, it's a pretty substantial number. But, you know, one thing that Mr. Bushak really hit on that I think is, is key is, you know, we're looking at this project seventy years out. You know, our hope is this project really kind of creates, you know, a regional draw for the, the community, and therefore restaurant sales are going to increase, more people are going to come in and live near here and invest in their homes, and, and so it's, you know, it's kind of a long-winded way of saying it's really tough to, to track to a certain degree, but we do expect significant incomes from, from the project.
Follow-up question, and this might be Mr. Buckley, might be Mr. Elam, just, and we've probably had this, this kind of Q and A, or it's even been perhaps volunteered in terms of information in the past, but farmers markets in general, just, you know, the kind of, that are public, publicly owned, generally, do you find that they, your experience and research shows that they are bringing in that return to the community? I think, again, just as the, as you've looked at other communities, and I know we've got a few in the metro, and then other, probably, there's probably other metros as well, do you see that just overall as being, you know, the positive overall draw? I know that's a bit amorphous question, but.
So I, I think that, that if I, if I'm understanding the question, it's like, do farmers market have a net positive benefit to the community? The question that I, I hate to ask you yet
Because this is such a, this isn't just a farmers market, it's a, it's a big investment.
Well, and is, is it the, is the benefit purely a financial benefit? Is the benefit a more community-wide benefit as well? So I think, I think there's, there's probably a couple of different ways to answer that I don't know off the top of my head, say how, I'll just say like how profitable the farmers markets around our area are. Mr. Rogers, Donnie Rogers, might have a little bit more information on that.
Think about Mr. Rogers.
But I do know that the farmers markets in the area have all been built by municipalities in the area.
Got it, okay.
And they're, they're typically a community asset that is, that is utilized for the community benefit.
I would, if Mr. Rogers wants to say something, I think that'd be great.
Donnie Rogers, Executive Director, Downtown Lee Summit Main Street, who manages the farmers market as our organization. Market for us has been a quality of life issue. It's creating that walkability, that meeting place for the community to come together. I mean, if you come out to the farmers market on a Saturday morning, it's as much about buying produce as, as meeting your friends and neighbors. From an economic development standpoint, it's been a huge driver in downtown Overland Park. I would say that's the main reason to go to downtown Overland Park is our farmers market on those Wednesdays and Saturdays. So financially, can tell you that dollar-for-dollar return on your investment, but I know how much activity it brings to the heart of our community. And so with that, I mean, anything, I mean, other questions, we're turning vendors away this season, I will tell you that, so.
Or you have more demand than you have the ability to provide a space for right now.
One hundred percent. We've had that for a number of seasons, so.
Helpful, okay.
And if I could make just one other point on the payback of the bonds, with the, the amount shown, that's assuming that, I'll, I'll say the worst-case scenario, that we, we pay back the full thirteen million dollars from that. We are fully anticipating, well, actually, of that nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred of that will come straight from the CID, so that reduces the burden on the general fund, if you will.
Okay, so it's not nine-ten, it's, it'd be something less?
It'd be something less than
Closer to seven fifty?
Yeah.
Roughly.
As far as the, the annual burden, that would be, what I would say would be the worst-case scenario on there. And from there, we do know that there will be, I'll say, infusions of cash, if you will, throughout the life of these bonds, from the sale of the property in the area, from potential MDFB funding, that will come in at various times. And so the, the timing of the cash flow of the payback on that
Could be drawn faster than, paid down faster.
Could be paid down much faster.
Meaning when we sell off this parcel for private purposes, we will actually have a little bump in cash that allows us to pay down the bond quicker.
Exactly. There's some nuance with that, as far as the timing and when you're allowed to make that payment through there, so the timing of those cash flows will also be dependent upon, upon that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Elam. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to dialogue about these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Felker, for your questions, especially about the revenue streams. I think that was really good information. I think, obviously, this is a project that's been a priority for the community, for the council for a very long time, so really excited to see it continue. I think as we talk about how it's going to drive growth downtown, I think turning this into a three- or four-season market instead of a one-season market is going to help bring in folks throughout the year instead of just the limited time that the market runs right now, so I'm really excited about that. And when I look at, you know, the question about the financing, it's like, we're going to pay for this one way or another. It's just a question of whether we pay for it over time with bonds, or whether we pay for it upfront with the money that we've saved in the fund balance. So I think, like, it's, it's good questions about what the revenue stream is, how we're going to do this, but it's not like if we do more in cash and less in bonds or more in bonds and less in cash that we're not paying for it. So, I mean, I think it's, it's a good discussion about what level of, of cash we want to put in versus what level of financing we can carry, but hopefully, at the end of the day, it's, we're all, I think we've all had a really strong consensus that this is the project that we want to pursue, and that those revenues are, are being well-spent because it is, I think, going to be a, a real driver to our downtown for, for decades and decades, so that's really all I wanted to say. I'm just excited about this moving forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good questions. You guys want to add anything before, before we move to the ordinances?
Maybe just a fun piece of trivia related with this project. I, this is, tonight will at least be the forty-sixth time that this has been discussed with the council. I, I, that's starting in two thousand and thirteen, and so I know that it was discussed prior to two thousand and thirteen, and, and I will say that a bulk of these have occurred since two thousand and twenty-one, so thank you all for the time, because it has been a long
Well, you guys have put a lot of time in. I know you and Mr. Bushak especially have spent, and I'm sure Ms. Wordleman too, but a lot of time on these spreadsheets and working with the Buckleys, and it's been a big time commitment, and we appreciate the, the due diligence and all the, all that you've put into it for us. Yeah, Councilmember Level?
Thanks, Mayor, and I, I just, this is just some general comments, and I, I don't want to take away from the work that's been put into this, the impact, you know, it is a, it's a beautiful project, but I would be remiss if I didn't just take this opportunity to say that I have serious questions about our procurement process and, and, you know, more in general, the agreements we continue to enter into, and how we're bidding construction projects. And I understand completely the difference between GMP and design-build, and we've talked about this, and I recall when we first entered into this agreement, or at least contracted with this group, I remember talking to Mr. Dunning and Mr. Elam afterwards, and I said, hey, I think this is a mistake. I think it's a mistake from a cost perspective, and I want to see the city get better at our procurement process when it comes to building, building buildings. Regardless of what we think this is, like, open bid, it's just not how it works, and we need to either, I think, maybe as a city, look at how we can be better internally, like as superintendents of projects, working closely with the contractors, but there's no doubt in my mind that if this went out to bid with a set of construction drawings, it would be significantly less than what we're getting ready to enter into. And so I just, again, I hope that we can really dive into these conversations a little bit further as we have more projects coming up with bonds and things like that, that we are being better stewards of, of the taxpayer money, at least knowing like when something grows like this, that, hey, we did everything possible to make sure that we're getting the right price and the right product and have the right general contractor, because we're getting ready to write a lot of checks here. So that's it. I just wanted the opportunity to say my piece on that, and appreciate all your work on this. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion? Good, Councilmember Hodges, would you read bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-nine?
I advance to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-nine, an ordinance approving change order number one to the Guaranteed Maximum Price One Agreement with McCowen Gordon Construction Company for the Downtown Market Plaza Project, an increase of, excuse me, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars for a revised guaranteed maximum price of six million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and an increase of fifteen calendar days.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-nine by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMorrow. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes seven to one. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-seven?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-seven, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and McCowen Gordon Construction Company to set guaranteed maximum price two for the Downtown Market Plaza Project in the amount of twenty-two million, five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and five dollars.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-seven by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Question? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes seven to one. Thank you. And Councilmember Level, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-eight?
I move to advance to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-seven, zero-three-eight, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and McCowen Gordon Construction Company to set guaranteed maximum price three for the Downtown Market Plaza Project in the amount of three million, sixty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, zero cents.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-eight by Councilmember Level, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, and it also passes seven to one. Thank you all. And that takes us to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Councilmember DeMorrow, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-eight?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-eight, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, by revising Appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the City of Lee Summit.
Thank you. I have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-eight by Councilmember DeMorrow, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Thank you. Councilmember DeMorrow, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-eight, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-nine, traffic and motor vehicles of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, by revising Appendix B, schedule of stopping, standing, and parking restrictions for certain streets and segments of streets located in the City of Lee Summit.
You have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-eight by Councilmember DeMorrow, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. That's adopted. Thank you. Let's see here, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-nine?
Sure. I move for a second reading, bill number twenty-four dash oh-two-nine, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven fifty-nine to the South Prairie Lee Interceptor Sewer Improvement Project to Leith and Sons, Inc., in the amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents, and authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-nine by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker?
Mayor, I'll be recusing from this due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
I will be doing the same.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes six-zero with two recusals. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-four dash oh-two-nine, an ordinance awarding the bid for project number seven fifty-nine for the South Prairie Lee Interceptor Sewer Improvements Project to Leith and Sons, Inc., in the amount of one million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy cents, and authorizing city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero-two-nine by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes six-zero with two recusals. Thank you. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-zero?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-zero, an ordinance approving modification number three to the agreement dated August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR, Inc., for professional engineering services for sanitary sewer modeling, hydraulic capacity, and design services for an increase of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars with an amended, amended not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars, and authorizing the same manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-zero by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Question? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight-zero. Councilmember Edson, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-four dash zero-three-zero, an ordinance approving modification number three to the agreement dated August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR, Inc., for professional engineering services for sanitary sewer modeling, hydraulic capacity, and design services for an increase of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars with an For an increase of twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars with an amended, amended not to exceed amount of five hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars. And authorizing the same manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three zero by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, that bill's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three one?
Thank you, Mayor, I move for second reading, bill number twenty-four dash oh three one, an ordinance approving addendum number three to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services dated January thirty, twenty twenty-three, RFQ number twenty-two, oh three oh. Between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR Engineering, Inc., for professional engineering services for the MBC Winnebago Excess Flow Holding Basin Study. For a not to exceed amount of two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars, and authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three one by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight, zero, Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move for adoption of bill number twenty-four dash oh three one, an ordinance approving addendum number three to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services dated January thirty, twenty twenty-three, RFQ number twenty-two, oh three oh. Between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and HDR Engineering, Inc., for professional engineering services for the MBC Winnebago Excess Flow Holding Basin Study. For not to exceed amount of two hundred sixteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars, and authorizing city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three one by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. That bill's adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three two?
Mayor, I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three two, an ordinance approving change order number one. Crack Seal FY twenty-four program, project number eight fifteen, to increase the project timeline by eighteen days and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three two by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson, discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight, zero, Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of bill number twenty-four dash zero three two, an ordinance approving change order number one to the agreement with Pavement Management LLC for the Crack Seal FY twenty-four program. Project number eight fifteen, to increase the project timeline by eighteen days and authorizing the city manager.
We have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three two by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Cast your vote. Votes are in, please record the vote. Adopted unanimously, thank you, Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three three?
I move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three three, an ordinance approving change order number two to the agreement with Whedonman, Inc., for the stormwater improvements. Southeast Hackmore Drive Project, project number five seven six three two two dash seven C dash one. For an increased amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents, for a revised agreement amount of nine hundred forty-one thousand forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. And authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three three by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Edson, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight, zero, Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number twenty-four dash zero three three, an ordinance approving change order number two to the agreement with Whedonman, Inc., for. The stormwater improvement Southeast Hackmore Drive Project, project number five seven six three two two dash seven C dash one. For an increased amount of eighty-four thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents, for a revised agreement amount of nine hundred forty-one thousand forty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. And authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three three by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Edson, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, it's adopted eight, zero, thank you, Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three four?
I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three four, an ordinance approving agreement for the construction of a metal building expansion for water utilities with MAR Building Solutions, sole source in the amount of five hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. And authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three four by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker?
I'll be recusing from this due to a conflict of interest.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes seven, zero with a recusal, Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-four dash zero three four, an ordinance approving agreement for the construction of a metal building expansion for water utilities with MAR Building Solutions, sole source in the amount of five hundred forty-four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. And authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three four by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes seven, zero, Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three five?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to advance to a second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three five, an ordinance authorizing. Authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for confinement of prisoners by and between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Johnson County, Missouri, by and through the Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three five by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Edson, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight, zero, Councilmember Pryor, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, bill number twenty-four dash zero three five, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement for confinement of prisoners. By and between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and Johnson County, Missouri, by and through the Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, we have a motion to adopt, bill number twenty-four dash zero three five by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight, zero, thank you all. We're on proposed ordinances first reading, Councilmember DeMoro, would you please read bill number twenty-four dash zero three six?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three six, an ordinance vacating. A portion of a certain general utility easement located at eighteen oh one Southwest Fountain Drive in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you, we have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-four dash zero three six by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Hodges, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote, passes eight, zero, thank you all, and we're on committee reports. Member Shields?
Thank you, Mayor, I have a couple tonight, um, a finance and budget committee is going to meet on March fourth. I am going to be out of town, so my illustrious vice chair will be taking over for me. Are you guys going to move that meeting to five PM, is that what it was looking like, I, I think there was a little discussion about, about that? Well, I will defer it to them, but the, the time on the schedule is four PM, but it's, looks like it's going to be pushed a little bit later in the evening, so. Just wanted to give a heads up to the public about that. Also, on the topic of finance and budget, we talked a little bit tonight about how much of that fund balance we're going to allocate to the farmer's market. I think at a later meeting, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about some other possible priorities, and I just want to, maybe Mr. Dunning, if you want to speak really briefly to what that'll look like and. When council members might bring up any topics that they have on their mind for, for funding priorities?
Sure, yeah, we, uh, as you mentioned, Councilmember Shields, we had that special finance and, and budget meeting, and we as management team had a chance to think through other priorities. Throughout the community within the organization, and we identified others. Be happy to share those with you, it's in the finance and budget, uh, that special finance and budget meeting packet anyway. But if you, if there are other thoughts, uh, about utilization of those funds, certainly open to those, receiving those, that, that input. We do have some homework to do on, on some of these other ideas that we came up with, uh, to make investments. And so we'll be prepared to continue to bring that forward, I think we've met the goal of identifying through the, uh, through the ordinance and through the policy. What it is we have above that thirty-five percent, what opportunities that presents, and then finding ways to, uh, to make those investments, so I think we're on a good path there. But yeah, I'd be happy to share, if, if you'd like for me now, or.
Well, I guess what I, what I was thinking is we talked about in that meeting about what the appropriate forum would be for that full discussion, and when a council member, if there's a project that they've really been thinking about, would be great to fund, when would be a good time to bring that up? I think, I think we were saying eventually this would come back to the full council for maybe a fuller discussion, so just. I just wanted to kind of put that out there so that folks could start thinking about it, be prepared to bring up those priorities when it's time to have that meeting, just so that it's not sprung on you and you didn't have a chance to put together the. Thing you really want to do on stormwater or sidewalks or any other city budget priority.
Yeah, thank you, and agreed, right, we can do that homework, I'll say homework preparatory work, uh, in, in the finance and budget committee, but I would anticipate. Once we have that discussion, then, yeah, I think we owe it to the full council to bring forward those thoughts, and so.
Right, and for the members who aren't on that committee, then that'll be their opportunity to maybe bring up some other topics as well?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make everyone aware of that as my committee report. And then my other report is I'm the liaison for downtown Main Street, and they had their meeting right before our meeting tonight. And presented as part of their packet, their PSA fiscal year twenty twenty-four bi-annual recap report, so. I won't read the entire thing to you, but they have just a whole list of activities that they've been doing all year, all the volunteer hours that they've logged, all the events they've put on, all the different ways that they're. Working to enhance the downtown and the city, and I think, um, Mr. Dunning may be sending that around later for everybody to look at, but, um, just wanted to. Mention that because I think they're doing a great job, um, and I know their PSA is going to be up in June, I believe.
This, this is the last year, and so we'll, uh, bring that forward through the budget process.
So we'll, we'll have that discussion again, but I think it's a great chance ahead of that coming up in the next few months to look and see what they've been doing over the, the past year, so, that's all, thank you.
All right, thank you, other committee reports? Seeing none, council comments? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor, so I just wanted to, um, kind of echo Councilmember Lovell's comments earlier, I would like to look at the process, I, um. Yeah, I'll just leave it at that, I do think it would be a good idea to kind of look at that process, just because. I know the guarantee I'd gotten before this council meeting, I'd gotten a couple of questions about the guaranteed maximum price, and. How are we revising the guaranteed maximum price when it's a guaranteed maximum price, and I feel like it was clarifying. When Mr. Elam was, um, giving his presentation, but I would just like to look at that process, so thanks.
Councilmember Shields?
So this one will be totally unrelated to anything that we have discussed lately, um, something I would love for us to have a discussion at some point about is. The World Cup, um, that's coming up, and what we can do as a city to prepare for that, I know that's been on all of our minds. And one thing that I want to throw into the discussion when we start it is maybe, um. Loosening up our Airbnb rules for the few months around it, that, you know, if somebody wants to rent out their house for a month and pay their mortgage for a year, maybe we ought to give them the opportunity, so. We don't need to have that discussion tonight, but just something I wanted to put in the, the queue for when we start those talks, thanks.
We do need to start planning, Mr. Dunning, uh, with our DMO people and. I mean, it's. KCADC and the, the Kansas City area is wonderful, but they're not going to advocate for Lee Summit the way we can advocate for ourselves. Um, and we need to put together a plan for that, for that time period, and it's going to take a lot of planning, so we got to get it started.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you. All right, staff roundtable?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I'm going to ask Crystal Weber, Assistant City Manager, give a brief update on efforts underway for. The DMO, which was just referenced, uh, and where we're at with that, and as well as the cultural and the wellness commission work that she's been, uh, working with those entities on.
Crystal Weber, Assistant City Manager, sorry I'm short, I have to pull the microphone, it would unplug it. So I know that you've all had a long meeting, you have more to get to, um, but I do want to share, it's thirty-one degrees outside, so it's warm in here, so I'm trying to take too long, but at least it's comfortable. If the mayor will indulge me, I wanted to give a little bit of information on World Cup, so we have already been working with our Amtrak partners and our MoDOT partners. On the information that they're getting on World Cup and transportation, and then we have representatives from the DMO and our staff that are attending a meeting this Friday. With all of the arts and culture organizations regarding World Cup activities, so as we try to pull and piece together information from the different sources, we'll keep informed as we move ahead with those activities. But right now, if you hear anything, let us know, because it seems to be bits and pieces from all different places, so the more we can coordinate and communicate, the better off we'll be. Until we get some centralized communication happening, so, um, but it's excited, it's coming, and we're hearing a little bit, um, some good updates, it looks like we might have three trains a day by World Cup, which would be incredible. Hopefully there'll be three trains on time a day, that's what we're working on right now, so, um, as you see requests come through. Regarding state support for state funding and federal funding of Amtrak, that's what they'll be centered around, is trying to get those three trains a day up and operational before World Cup, so. There'll be a big impact to Lee Summit. Um, I just want to give the council a heads up on some things that have been coming before the council in April, so our wellness commission and our cultural commission have been working with a facilitator from Mark. On their strategic vision and some work plans, they'll be coming here hopefully on April twenty-third to present those to the council. To make sure they align with the direction the council set in our community strategic plan, and to make sure the council doesn't have anything else they would like them to work into that plan, because they are an advisory committee for you. So if there are things that you have thought of as a council, or as you move through the year and do your own strategic planning moving forward, things that come up. Things that might be too hairy or too much bulk to send straight to committee, that need a lot of research and vetting, those are things you can send to both of those commissions, so. We'll try to, to keep that fresh on your mind, that they're there to help you do your job, um, I would say they're there to do a lot of the hairy legwork before it gets to committee, so please use them as that, they're all excited to dive in. We're also, because those committees have been so successful just starting out with our new staffing and support structure. We're also going to start providing the same staffing and support structure to our human relations commission, so as you all remember, they weren't part of those reorganized committees. They do have kind of an old outdated mission from the council, so that may be part of their work, coming back to work with you to clarify the work you'd like them to do. But we are going to start providing the same kind of extensive staffing, so that they can be as productive hopefully, and work with these other commissions as well, because there. Sometimes there are things might cross over, so we'd rather than be collaborative than have two groups trying to do two competitive things, so. DMO, the DMO group has been working with the consultant, Mr. Wizanant, which you've met, for about, oh, four months. Working on their strategic plan, their business plan and their budget, um, they have almost wrapped up, they had their last planning session. Two weeks ago, Mr. Wizanant's revising that, they're going to get together another time and look at how much that's going to cost. And put some final that, and then they'll be coming to present that to council, of course, with a funding plan, so we'll be coming to ask for money, but based on a strategic vision and a business plan that you can look at, so. They're very exciting, um, we're getting ready to set our first real regular meeting date, so we'll start, um, trying to take more time from Councilmember Hodges, so apologies in advance. We will not be meeting on Fridays and Saturdays anymore, so you can re the sigh of relief, and no miss kids soccer games and things, we're going to try to have a regular afternoon meeting. But they've been working hard, they're such an exciting group, I want to thank you all for the work you did to help recruit them, we couldn't have asked for better expertise for free. Because they're all invested in the outcome of the DMO themselves and the work that they do, so it's been really exciting. Also have a favor to ask, the city is doing a lot of work with, um, R seven and with our other school districts to help with a state curriculum requirement. So we have lots of groups of third graders that are going to be coming to City Hall this year. For somewhere from an hour to four hours, depending on, on the school and what they're looking for, and we would love to have council members who have the time. And would like to volunteer with staff to lead them through these governance exercises, not going to put you on the spot right now. But if you're interested and you have anywhere from thirty minutes to four hours, typically on a Wednesday, um, let me know, I would love to have extra help, and plus, they just. It's like meeting rock stars when they meet elected officials, I mean, staff are kind of cool, but they get really excited, like when the mayor comes in. And they all want to sit in your chairs and take pictures, so I think it'd be really amazing for them to get to meet you. We also have a couple of very short, like thirty-minute opportunities to do some career fairs, so if you'd be interested either in talking about your career as a council member. Or what you do professionally outside of here, please let me know, she's always looking for help finding folks, and I'd love to be able to just give her a list of people that are available. Any questions about any of that, that's a lot.
Go ahead, sir.
I know it's lame.
You may have set a date, I'm sorry if I missed it.
Oh, um, April twenty-third.
What, sorry, I'm not sure.
Tuesday. Oh, you mean for the council, I'm sorry, I should have let you finish your question, for the council presentations or for the schools?
I was going to ask about the, when you anticipated the DMO coming back with their, their strategic plan, business plan and the budget?
The DMO, we don't have a date, but it will be in May following the three, the two, possibly three commissions, um, HRC might have theirs ready in time. HRC might have theirs ready on time, if we...
Anticipated that HRC will present something?
Wellness Commission and the Cultural Commission.
And?
And then the DMO.
One, two, and three, three different weeks?
Yeah, and HRC's tentative, they just met this week and agreed to take that path, so it would be a very accelerated path for them versus the other commissions had a couple of months to get through it. So it'll really be based on their availability, which, that's a lot to ask to do, as you guys know, a night meeting a week is a lot for volunteers, so.
And the April twenty-third date, that was the school thing?
No, I'm sorry. April twenty-third is the council presentation from the Wellness Commission and Cultural Commission. The school dates, we have five different dates set so far, and we have other dates open and reserved if schools are interested in participating, so. But I did hear you volunteer, right? Okay.
I do have one more question. Sorry, Mayor. Just because you just mentioned a budget request, this is just for frame of reference, since we will probably have to talk about this at some point, but do you know at this point where, what our balance is in the Business Enterprise Fund?
No, I don't have that with me tonight, but I do have the information, can email it out to you, and the budget managers are working right now on those revenue projections, we're looking at what that's going to look like next year as well, of how that balance is going to grow, but I can send you where we sit right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember DeMoro.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you have the dates for the school groups?
So the two dates we have right now are March...
Well, if you want, just send them out.
It'll be easier if I send them, because I'm afraid I'll give you the wrong day of the week, but they're always on Wednesdays, if that helps. Except for when we do career days, and those tend to be on Thursdays or Fridays.
All right, thank you.
You, councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. You mentioned some schools haven't signed up yet, but I have a third grader, so I want to, if my children's school has not signed up yet, can you send me the information?
Yes, you can tell me not in public which school it is, and I'll let you know.
Okay, I think you know, but, yeah. Okay, thank you, and then I'd be happy to volunteer, also, especially if that school's signed up, so.
It really is one of the best days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Mr. Dunning?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple other things. Want to recognize our very own Mark Schoffler for thirty years of service to this community. Appreciate it. The Jackson County Health Department has released the twenty twenty-three community health assessment, and so I will email that all to you. I think they mentioned it would be released early this week, I haven't seen it yet, because I was out most of the day, but I'll get that information to you. I'm working with them traditionally, Mayor, they'll come and just give an overview of the health assessment, so if that's something we want to work into an agenda, we can do that, but I'll email that information to you. We are expecting weather tonight, so rain, then sleet, then snow, and so we do have crews out, it should hopefully melt quick, but we will be treating roads as needed this evening, so be careful in the morning. We are just annihilating our east-west corridors with roadwork between Colburn and Chipman that we're doing, and what we're doing here in downtown with the downtown Market Plaza. Another one to add to the list is Chipman Road, between Douglas Street and Donovan Street. This is private utility work that will be taking place, I'll shoot this to you as well. So between Douglas and Donovan, work will begin on March eleventh for two months. The westbound lane will be, lanes will be closed for a two-month period, so that information just came out, so I wanted to share that with you. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would somebody like to read us into closed session? Councilmember DeMoro?
Mayor. Pursuant to section six-one-zero-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri pertaining to legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body or any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its inheritors, I move for closed session.
Second?
Thank you, we have a motion to move into closed session by councilmember DeMoro, seconded by councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Member DeMoro?
Aye.
Councilmember Shields?
Aye.
Councilmember Edson?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryor?
Aye.
Councilmember Hodges?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
For Felker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lopez's abscite, Mayor Baird?
Aye. Thank you all.